I, Elizabeth B. Tisdale, Mayor of the City of Evanston, pursuant to Council Rule 16.3, call for a special meeting of the Evanston City Council on Saturday, February 20th, 2010, at 9:00 a.m. in the City Council chambers at the Evanston Civic Center, 2100 Ridge, for the purpose set forth below. Public comment, 30-minute time limit, Resolution 13R10 approving the 2010-2011 fiscal year budget of the City of Evanston. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Rainey?
Here.
Alderman Burris?
Here.
Alderman Fisk?
Here.
Alderman John Buckes?
Here.
Alderman Wynn?
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
Alderman Holmes?
Here.
Alderman Tendem?
Here.
Alderman Grover?
Here, thank you.
We have a quorum. Alderman Wynn is in the parking lot on her way up. First on the agenda is public comment. Going to call up the first three speakers. You each have three minutes. First, Jeff Zick, Junad Rizki, Brian Steiglitz. Please give your name and address. Thank you.
Jeff Zick, 1208 Monroe Street, 9th Ward. Morning. The city has serious problems, and we need serious people to solve them, people qualified to solve the numerous problems soon to be faced by the Building Division, people with the education and experience to deal with the day-to-day situations sure to occur. The elimination of Assistant Director of Building and structural inspectors, I believe, is a poor decision. We should wave our flag and surrender to the contractors who will be sure to take advantage of that situation. Perhaps we should thank Senator Durbin and Congresswoman Shikowsky for the help in obtaining the $18 million of taxpayer money, but decline the offer because we won't have the people to ensure life safety and that the city is getting its money's worth from each project. In any case, surrender, I believe, is not an option. We need serious people to solve serious problems. Please keep these people working. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, or good morning, Junad Rizki. I got this card from the Central Street Neighbors and a few days ago, and on the card they say, "Why is Evanston broken? What to do about it?" They're going to have a meeting, and that's one of the topics. And I think my comment would be, why do we pay so much in taxes here in fees and services? And what are we really getting for those services? Everyone understands the economy is really in trouble, and many other communities are having problems. But a friend of mine actually sits on a large condo board in Schaumburg. Schaumburg is actually instituting a property tax now, which they never had before. They sat all these people down, and they talked to them. But what was interesting is, while they're starting to have a property tax, they eliminated their vehicle sticker. And their vehicle sticker was $25. And in Skokie, they're starting a utility tax now, of course. But everywhere else doesn't have all the taxes. If you go throughout what we have here, we have all these taxes and fees, and they're up to the max, and you really can't go any farther. And that's where the problem lies here. And why has this happened? Well, you know, I've made a few examples. Like, I talked about the Sustainability Coordinator and how citizens came here and asked for that position. It's $80,000 in the budget. And is it needed now? Probably not, but it's still here. And I think there are plenty of other positions of that nature that have been asked for by citizens that probably need to go. Recently, this council got this $18 million for this money. But I was thinking about this because in Willmet, my wife's nephew lives there, a house next to him went into foreclosure. Well, at the height of the market, that house might have been worth half a million dollars. The bank sold it for 300,000, somewhere in the 300,000s. So in Evanston, I don't know, we have an $18 million program to sell things. The banks can sell these things if there's a market. So we had to create a program here, which will probably add employees and do something. But why? And, you know, we're talking about putting signs in front of properties the banks own. Well, that's not the fact of the matter. There's other problems if these properties aren't selling. So I think these are the kind of things. You know, we're all federal taxpayers, so how this 18 million will be spent, and if we have more employees doing this, and then after the program's gone, these employees will be here. So the council needs to think about all these things because they all cost money.
Thank you.
My name is Brian Steiglitz, 2018 Colfax. I am also a contractor who has worked in the community for over 20 years. I would like to speak in regards to the elimination of the only residential structural inspector on staff. It makes little sense to me that you would eliminate a position that is not duplicated. Who is going to provide this service? The electrical inspector? The plumbing inspector? The plan reviewer? How will this affect the timeliness of inspections? Will the level of service that is provided be maintained? The city recently announced that they were awarded $18 million in grants for the renovation of foreclosed and abandoned homes. Who will be responsible for all these inspections? Construction relies on the timely inspections that can be performed within a couple of days without impacting the work schedule. Anything longer than that will throw a wrench into the schedule, thus impacting the overall costs of the job, not to mention the somewhat frayed relationship between a contractor and a homeowner. We barely can afford to build in this economy today. Changing the game just adds more burden onto an industry that is barely surviving. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Doug Hardy and Betty Esther.
Good morning, Council. I'm Doug Hardy. I live at 1720 Maple Avenue. I worked for the City of Evanston Forest Department for 35 years. And the department is in need for, actually, more forestry tree trimmers. I mean, there's so many trees, and, you know, the City of Evanston is called Tree City USA. We were the first. We were before Chicago, before Chicago and the surrounding suburbs. We were named first, Tree City USA, because we took care of our trees, and the forestry members were proud to do the work and to keep up the great beautification of the City of Evanston. And I just want to comment and say that I believe we should not relieve any forestry members. If anything, add to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Betty Esther. I stay at 2131 Church Street. This budget process started at the Levy Center, and we sit around the room, we talked about things, and there was lots of things on the list that should be cut. We put stuff up on the wall. It was a good process. And then it came to this building. They said, "We will tell the council what will happen at this building." Each week, there was a budget meeting here at this building. Each week, there was new position. This is being cut. This is being cut. And then you look at, wait a minute, we didn't hear that at the beginning. They just told us what they was doing, what they had, how much they was going to need. Well, we might have to do this. But it really wasn't a full detail information until we got here. We saw we're cutting the library, then the library's back, and then what it is. And then you talked about straw votes, and then you came back. The last thing was that, well, we cut everything. Do we have another department? Yes. We cut stuff from the Community Development Department. And then you have to look at, you're cutting these people, they are going, who is going to do the work? What is going to be the quality of the work? If you cut an architect and you not put an architect back there, who's going to do that work? If you cut your inspector, who's going to pick it up? You have one person left that then will have to pick up the job of three people. To give you an example, if you looked at TV, they had this movie, Undercover Boss, and they showed the waste management. The man went out, he went to one facility, they had one employee that was doing four people jobs. So is that what we are going to wind up with? They was making money, so they put in more extra people there. But can we do that when we lose our people? So please, think about what we are cutting. Are we cutting service to people that are essentially needed? Life service, health? What are we cutting? Are we cutting to hurt people? Will hurt peoples in the health service? That will hurt people. In the building trade? That will hurt people because if someone do not catch a contract, as the gentleman had said, then the person that owned their house is going to have to come back and get another contract to fix something that wasn't done right, that was missed by somebody that should have caught it. So please, think about it. I know you have now to make a decision. And at one budget meeting, I know former Mayor Morton had said, "Well, you don't have to make it on the 21st. It could be such and such a time." I don't know whether that's true or not, but you need to think about these cuts very seriously before they happen. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Next is a discussion of the budget. And I would like to ask the question I had at the top of my list, since I don't see any lights immediately, which is, what will the impact of cutting a structural engineer be? And it was on the $18,150,000 worth of additional building that will be going on in the city, and not only the structural engineer, but the architect and the other positions in the Community Development Department.
Certainly. Madam Mayor, members of the council, good morning. Lima Walker, our Community and Economic Development Director, is here and can talk a little bit about the restructuring that we've done and the inspection resources that we will have once the proposed cuts have been implemented.
Mr. -- Madam Mayor and members of council, essentially, there's been a very significant decline in development activity over the past couple of years. The number of permits has declined by between 15% and 20%. Essentially, we do not require the level of staffing that we currently have. With the proposed elimination of the structural inspector, the department will still have two people providing that service. We have three people who do structural inspections currently. We'll be eliminating one of those positions as part of the proposed budget. The department still will have three architects on staff with the elimination of one of the architectural positions.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, maybe just for clarification, Mr. Walker, in the past, the inspectors have had a sort of a discipline attached to their names, so they've been an electrical inspector or plumbing inspector or some specific reference there. Could you speak to the qualifications of our inspectors versus the titles that they've had and your plans on redeploying those inspectors?
Yes, essentially, the inspection function has been divided between two divisions. We've had a property standards division and a building division. The plan is basically to combine those so that we can achieve some economies in terms of the inspection staff. We also will be doing cross-training so that people, we won't have to send out one and two and three inspectors by discipline on certain jobs over time. So there will be some economies achieved there, and we don't require two separate divisions. In most departments across the country, you essentially have an inspections division so that you can deal with the property standards issues and with the building issues. And here, it's been divided historically, I guess, for some years, for some time.
And again, Madam Mayor, one last clarifying question. As far as the experience and the qualifications of those inspectors, could you speak to that as far as, are we losing any qualifications or any expertise with the elimination of the inspection position?
No, we are not. As I indicated, we still will have two structural inspectors. The lead structural inspector has a master's in architecture from the University of Michigan, very well-qualified individual. And as I said, we currently have three people performing structural inspections in the department. With the decline in development activity, which I'm sure all of the members of council are aware of, we don't require that level of staffing in order to continue to provide the services that we currently have. With the elimination of the one position in architecture, we still will have three architects on staff. The development activity, as it currently exists, does not warrant the staffing levels in those particular areas. There's been a very significant decline in development revenue. Over the past four years, we've gone from about $6 million to $3 million. The permit activity in 2006-07 was just under 3,600 permits. Now we're at less than 3,000 projected. It's essentially that we've got more staff than required, given the current level of development activity.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, I think on the part of, at least me, as a non-professional, I'm concerned about the explanation, and perhaps it's just because I don't understand it. When you say cross-training, what are you talking about? I know several of the inspectors and have followed their work for 20 years, and I know they're very good at taking the international code and marking violations or indicating that there are no violations. But I'm not sure about your explanation of cross-training and going into the Building Division versus the Property Standards Division. Could you just clarify that for me?
There are some inspections that could be performed by our property maintenance inspectors. For example, now in the Building Division, are some of our inspectors, if they're going out to look at a driveway, for example, the property maintenance inspectors could do that as well. Currently, that's being done in the more specialized area of the Building Division. I'm essentially saying that there are opportunities for us to ensure that people can do certain levels of inspections that don't require the same level of sophistication that we currently apply. In terms of the more sophisticated, that require an architect, for example, we still have several architects on staff when it comes to plan review and what comes doing the kind of inspections that are required.
You know, here's my problem with that. It's quite obvious from looking at the bills list that we hire outsiders under contract and have for years to do inspections. And the reason has always been because we don't have enough people or people who have the time to do those inspections, or they don't have the qualifications. I'm not sure what the explanation is, but we do hire -- and that's been during this period of time when we don't have a lot of permits. So I'm very concerned about the loss of the head of the Building Department. I think that that's a critical situation. I believe she has -- and, you know, I want to try to avoid protecting an individual person. I'm concerned mostly about the individual position. And that position needs to be filled. I know that there's lots of work coming up. There's Northwestern work, there's work in my ward, I've got a building project coming up. I just think we might be having a knee-jerk reaction to the downturn. We should have had that reaction last year, not this year. I think things are going to start picking up. And so I'm really worried. It's my understanding that traffic engineering handles driveways. I mean, they're the ones who go out and inspect driveways because driveways require curb cuts. And so is that not true? I mean...
In terms of the curb-cutting aspect, but if there are any structural issues involved, then we would send out an inspector.
Well, what is an inspector? I mean, I don't understand that. I don't -- I'm having a problem with that being used as the example of what an inspector in the Property Standards Department can do. When I've got people with roaches and toilets that don't flush and roofs that are leaking, I don't want those inspectors out looking at some, you know, McMansions driveway. That's for sure. So I really need more information about this. I've not found -- and, you know, to have him stand up here and tick off the qualifications of our current employees is fine. I have no question about the current employees' qualifications. I just don't think there's enough people to go around, and I think we're being foolish eliminating some of these positions. I think they're going to end up costing us money in the long run.
Madam Mayor, Alderman Rainey, one of the things that Mr. Walker and I have been able to do since our arrival is look at the management of the department. And I think one of our concerns is that we are not using the talented, capable staff that we have to their maximum benefit. And some of that has been a management issue. And I take responsibility for that, and I'm proposing to the council that we manage our existing resources better. In light of a $9.5 million budget deficit, in light of permit fees going down several million dollars, I believe that we can manage the staff that we have better and more efficiently cut down than the number of outside inspectors because, in many cases, our staff has the time and has the technical expertise to do that. And for reasons and specifics that I don't know, over the last several years, we have chosen to go on the outside. So again, as we look at trying to balance a $9.5 million budget and we look citywide at solutions, we are trying to be as responsible as we can, and we think in this instance we can provide better service with the remaining existing staff under better management.
Alderman Rainey, are you done?
No.
Okay.
Especially not now. That's -- I think you're well aware, City Manager, that I'm aware of the $9.5 million budget shortfall. I'm really aware of that. And I find it interesting, however, that some high-level staff, including you, will go to the mat on certain issues but not on others. For example, we have duplicated branch libraries in this town, and all our staff has done is think up ways to make it possible to retain that duplication. So yet, when we only have one head of the Building Department, every effort is being made to eliminate that position, and all of your resources and thinking is going into, let's get rid of this position. I'm not saying that that position needs to manage anybody. I'm saying that that position, in terms of the work that it does, is critical. It's been critical in my ward. I know maybe one or two people have had issues with that, but I can tell you that that position has been very, very important in the south end of town and in other parts of town. I mean, look at the things we've done in this community before you got here. So I think it's interesting how we've zeroed in on certain things that have to go. And I just want to make it known that that's the perception I have about lead staff in this budget. So one of the things that I want to do, and I just want to throw this out after we finish with this, is I want to begin at the top of the list and start and talk about revenues that you've projected. So, Madam Mayor, could you put me down the list when we change subjects?
I will put you down. I will put you down again, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris?
I too have problems with elimination of this position, particularly regarding the implementation and enforcement of the Green Building Ordinance and the new energy code. This position was instrumental and has knowledge about both of those things. And I fear that the remaining Community Development employees are not educated on these issues. And I wonder if you can address that. Have you looked at the qualifications of the remaining employees? Have they been engaged in the Green Building Ordinance? Do they understand the new energy code? You know, it's a little frustrating that, once again, we pass something, but then we may not be able to enforce it, and we're eliminating a position that was really kind of instrumental in doing, working on this.
Madam Mayor, through to Alderman Burris. Other staff were involved in that, and they clearly have some knowledge of what needs to be done in terms of implementing the Green Building Code and the Energy Code as well. Much of that is a matter of training, and we will see to it that the staff who remain in the department receive the necessary training in order to implement those ordinances that have been adopted by council. I mean, you know, clearly, this is a situation that no one wants to be in, but the simple fact is, is that we have more people than we need in order to do the work that is currently coming in, given the current level of development activity.
Alderman Wilson?
As much as I really don't like doing it, I'm -- I would support the cut with the regard of that department. You know, we have to make cuts, and Alderman Rainey, I'm going to disagree with your assertion that the staff has devoted most of its energy to the branch libraries. My perception is, to the contrary, at least my interaction, the staff's been very responsive to any of the inquiries I've had, whether it's libraries or anything else. And they've, you know, dropped, I don't know if they dropped what they're doing, but they've been very responsive, getting me, you know, all kinds of information on a variety of issues. And we're losing a lot of really good people. I've gone out, I've stopped at branch libraries that I ordinarily wouldn't stop at. I see people working hard. I see people enjoying themselves. But I've looked at other areas, too, and we're losing people across the city who are very hard workers. I do think it's very, very unfortunate that so much of the public dialogue, so much of the commentary, and I don't fault people for coming and voicing their views, but so much of that is focused on one or two issues when we have so many important and significant issues floating around. I'm fearful that the staff and the employees of the city who work very hard are going to feel like they're not appreciated because they are appreciated, and I want to make sure that we send that message. We don't take this lightly. I know that every single person up here has spent a large amount of time looking at all of these issues, not at one issue or not at two issues. Just because most of the people in town and most of the articles in the paper happen to be about one or two issues don't mean that we're not looking very hard at all these other points. And along those lines, as much as I have a high degree of discomfort, I can live with these cuts that we're discussing right now with the inspectors.
Alderman Holmes?
History's always important, and I'm just wondering, the council members who were here before, the older ones of us now, will remember the VK report. And I'm just wondering, Alderman Rainey, do you think that these cuts, don't you think these cuts sort of support that report? You remember?
If you want to, yes.
You know, what I recall from that report is, you know, the need for excellence. What I see happening, though, is diminishing the excellence in that department, especially the professionalism. And I'm concerned about the position. I know, I mean, I like the person in the job, but I'm trying to avoid thinking about that person. I'm really thinking about all of the duties and obligations and responsibilities that go along with that job. And no, I don't think the Virchow Krauss report addressed eliminating that position or anything having to do with that, not at all.
Well, not that position, but in terms of the reorganization of that department. And I'm just wondering, can we...
Absolutely. I agree with that. I agree with that. But that report really focused on professionalism and raising the bar, and I don't see that that's happening. I see that the effect, that the loss of this position is to diminish that professionalism in the department.
Well, maybe we can just hold Mr. Walker and City Manager accountable if this doesn't work. I mean, I think that that's the next step, that we have to...
I don't think we have any choice. Yeah.
Alderman Rainey? I'm sorry, Mr. Walker, go ahead.
I just wanted to speak very briefly to the VK report because I've gone through it quite thoroughly, and that report spoke specifically, for the members of council who may not be aware of that report, but that report spoke specifically to the operation of the department, that there was a considerable duplication of services, that there was a lack of coordination between different divisions. And this proposed reorganization is going to address some of that. And unfortunately, most of the issues that were identified were in the Building Division. And it was a lack of coordination, and as I said, that's what I'm attempting to do by merging the Building Division and the Property Standards Divisions because it's all inspections. It's inspections, and essentially, we don't need another manager to coordinate something. That's the job of the person who will be the division manager. I don't need two managers to do that one thing.
Alderman Rainey, I have you down again.
Well, I'm not so concerned about the management issue. I'm more concerned about the responsibilities of the person in terms of building oversight. And I think we're diminishing the professionalism by doing what we're doing. I mean, I don't have a problem with reducing the person who is or the position in the Building Department to, you know, in charge of buildings as opposed to being a manager. Maybe that's the mistake that's been made in that division. But I guarantee you, we're going to either see the need to be... But I guarantee you, we're going to either see the need to be hiring outside, or we're going to have problems in that department. It's going to happen. It can't not happen, because, and I hate to keep being so redundant, but the professionalism in the department has been, will be diminished as of March 1st.
But Alderman Rainey, over time, if there's a significant increase in development activity, then I would likely agree with you. But when we have a declining development activity, we do not need as many people to review plans, to issue permits. During the good times, I'm sure there was a justification for three structural people in the department. Those times aren't with us anymore, so we can reduce staff in that area. I'm sure during the good times, when there was a lot of good development activity, that we needed four architects in the department. Unfortunately, those times are gone. I certainly hope, as the development director, that they return, and return very soon, but they are not with us now. We do not need the same level of staff when development activity is lower than when development activity is high.
I see that this is a losing battle. However, I am just absolutely going to highlight the minutes where I argue that it's going to be a problem in the department. So, I mean, I'm giving up on this, and I think we're making a terrible mistake. So, thank you for your explanation.
Alderman Wen.
Well, very quickly, I thought that Virchow Krauss report was probably the single best report that we ever produced. It was, we got real value for the dollar we spent on that, and I agree with Mr. Walker in terms of what the analysis was. It was all about the problems of siloing that we had in the building and inefficiencies and ways in which we needed to make all of our departments, but particularly building and zoning, work better. So, I think that, I'm glad to hear that you're reviewing it, and it was one that I offered to everyone at my town hall meeting to read, because I thought it was one of the best things that we produced. And I urge all the new Aldermen to take time to read it.
Thank you, Alderman Burris.
Mr. Walker, I actually appreciate that you want to train staff to take over some of the responsibilities that would be gone after eliminating this position, but I think it does go back to what Alderman Rainey said about having a high bar and professionalism. The person in this position has a lot of knowledge that I think that we'll be losing and will be detrimental to the department. So, yes, we may be able to train people, but sending someone to a training session a few times will not get them up to speed in any near term. And I understand, once again, that this is, it's probably a losing battle, but we're losing a lot of knowledge and expertise. And I know that the city went through this a few years ago, when we had a lot of top management leave, and we lost a lot of institutional knowledge and a lot of experience and depth. And I think that's what's happening with the elimination of this position as well. But I do appreciate that you want to educate and train your staff.
Thank you, Alderman Burris, but those comments, I would suggest apply citywide, and we're losing almost 50 people. I'm sure that there are several of those employees that you could apply those same comments to. There's a lot of historical knowledge and a lot of technical expertise, and I assure you that nobody wants to be in this position. But would you want me to stand up here as your development director to say that I need the same level of staff when development activity is high versus development activities being low? That wouldn't be a responsible position for me to take.
Alderman Jean Baptiste, and we are losing 50 positions, but City Manager, how many people?
I believe it's 36.
36 at this point?
Thank you.
It's been a moving target.
You know, it's unfortunate that we are in the position that we are in, and I think some of us who have been on the council, you know, for a longer period of time than most of you, resisted trying to get to this level, but we knew that the day was coming, that we had to make significant cuts in order to reduce our expenditures. My problem is not so much the skill set that we may now have remaining, and you are hired as the head of that department, and so, you know, it's your responsibility to come to us and make certain proposals, and for us to accept or reject. But I've had some concerns as to whether or not we are being fair. I'm not sure the basis upon which you make the decisions to cut people, whether it is, and I'm not sure whether or not seniority plays a role in your decision. So, in this case, with this engineer, was it a skill set that, was he the lowest person on the seniority list? Was he, did he have, was his skill set too narrow and was not adaptable to other kinds of positions? How do we choose who to let go? I didn't hear anything about whether this individual was the last hired. And of course, that criticism extends to the secretary as well, and I'm not sure whether, you know, seniority, how you see seniority and all of that.
In the case of the structural inspector, the individual who is being impacted is the most junior, as far as the unionist position is concerned. So, he is the most junior, that reduction. In the case of the clerical staff, as I indicated, the department currently has seven support During this particular time period, as I said, given the level of development activity, we don't require seven support staff. We have five classified specifically as secretaries and two people on the permit counter. So, we have seven support staff. In terms of that particular decision, I decided that I didn't need a secretary, because I do most of those things myself, and that if we had to reduce anywhere in the department, that we would reduce in my area, and that's how I made that decision.
Okay, and I know that this particular position was above the black line, right?
Yes.
Okay. I may need to revisit that, but this, this fine.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It should be clear to all of us that a structural deficit of the scale that we face now requires some significant structural changes, and they can and must involve rethinking how we deploy all of our resources, including our human resources, as painful as that is. And it would be very difficult for me to support a budget that builds into it overstaffing. And I hate to let anyone go, but the times are different now, and so, thank you, Mr. Walker, and could I put in a formal request for that report? For those of us who haven't seen it, please.
Certainly. I think we should, we'll provide to the council, we'll also make sure it's on our community development website.
Thank you.
All right, I see no further lights. I'm sure that doesn't mean we're done with the budget, Alderman Jean Baptiste.
We're not, we're not. You know, in light of, I mean, that comment over the secretary of, your secretary, and a secretary, a support person in your department, the choice to eliminate your secretary, even though she was not the most junior person in the department, to me, is not a reflection of fairness. If you have seven support staff, and that particular individual is not the most junior, in fact, she may be the most senior person in that department, I don't see why that person could not have been shifted to a different division, and that you apply the same kind of approach to the engineer, to make sure that we give senior people, really, the first priority in retaining their jobs in their department, and, you know, reduce by eliminating the most junior person. So, I just don't think that's a fair approach. I think there's a factor that we have to take into consideration. I understand where you have, you know, an absolute need for a particular skill set, so you may want to retain certain individuals, but where you have seven support staff, and you've chosen to get rid of the most senior support staff, to me, that's not fair. And I think that we need to look at that again, even though it's above the black line. All that, you know, to me, gets to be meaningless when we are trying to make sure that we do the necessary cuts and at the same time, be as fair as we can as we move forward. And so, if we are to talk about institutional knowledge and history, you know, this person, to me, would be that kind of person who has that kind of information, who can possibly be, if there's some weaknesses in that person, can be cross-trained to serve others in that department, and that we approach this cut from looking at the person with the least seniority first, as opposed to cutting the person with the most seniority. So, I would, you know, propose that we restore that position, and we ask the director to cut the least senior person, the most junior person, as opposed to the most senior person. That's my position on it.
City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Alderman Jean Baptiste. Perhaps it would be useful for the council to maybe quickly walk through those seven positions and distinguish them. We've talked about them together, but perhaps at this point, it would be useful to distinguish them. Mr. Walker, I believe of those five positions, of the seven positions, five of them are represented by AFSMI and are of various clerical classifications. Is that correct? So, then there are two positions. One is the position that Alderman Jean Baptiste is referring to, which is the position of executive secretary, and there is a second executive secretary position in the department.
The second executive secretary position also is in AFSMI, though. So, there was only one that was not within the union.
Okay, so there are six, six positions which are subject to collective bargaining union rules, and one position that is not. And so, the position that we are referring to at this moment is the at-will position.
That's correct.
And, Madam Mayor, members of the council, those at-will positions are found in most departments, Ms. Daly, I believe that's correct, that serve department directors primarily, although I think that there has been some transition with that, and those positions are at-will positions. And I think the reason, and certainly this is the case in other communities that I've worked, they are at-will positions, is that they are held to different standards and different qualifications than are the representative positions. So, by eliminating the position, this individual, we have no other at-will position available to place that person in. So, then it becomes, is there a value to the position or not a value to the position? And in the context of the budget reductions we are looking at, we've tried to weigh the value of all of those positions and have made the determination that this position is the position that we can go without. And because that determination is made with a position that is an at-will position, issues of seniority, issues of other factors that would come into play with a representative employee are not in play here. And I think structurally, when you look at the city as a whole, these are a small number of positions, largely because of the concerns that Alderman Jean Baptiste is raising, is that you want to make sure that for the vast majority of your workforce, that there's that first hire, first fire role. But then you have that small collection of individuals who have been previously identified at these at-will positions that are held to a different standard, and those individuals who are hired in those positions are aware of that when they're hired. Generally, their compensation is a little bit more than the representative positions, and that is part of the circumstance of their employment. Again, these are difficult decisions, but again, in working with Mr. Walker and looking at the needs of the department, we felt that this position was the one position that would have the least impact on customer service and our ability to perform a efficient and effective department. We'd be happy to answer additional questions, but I think it's important to understand that this position is somewhat separate than the other clerical positions in the community development department.
Alderman Wilson?
I'm going to add a question to my comments, but there are union members who are being, whose positions are being eliminated, correct, throughout the budget cuts?
That is correct.
Right, I just didn't want that incorrect impression to get, to be made. And in my process of going through and accepting, or in some cases, rejecting some of the proposed cuts, I'm trying to recognize that the staff is taking a lot of factors into account. It's not just a question of seniority. It's not just a question of union membership. It's, I'm assuming, a wide range of factors. And I've asked questions about various positions, so what I'm trying to do is to not go through person by person and say, okay, I like this person, I don't like this person. There's nobody that I know that I don't like, but what I'm trying to do is avoid doing that, and looking at the structure of the organization, looking at the positions, and either, as Alderman Jean Baptiste mentioned, either accepting or rejecting those propositions as far as the organization goes. So, so far, from what I've heard, I'm fine with these changes in your department.
Alderman Rainey?
Are there others who want to talk about this? Are we at the point where we're moving on to the next subject?
I'm sorry, Alderman Fisk had her light on. Do you want to talk about this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Manager, good morning. I'm just interested in the at-will employees. Are these employees that could have joined the union but elected not to?
Generally, it's based on the position. So, these executive secretary positions generally are one per department. Not every department has one. There are two individuals in the city manager's office, that Ms. Cortez and Mrs. Todd are those positions. So, it's, is it 10 citywide? Roughly 10 citywide of, and these are basically the clerical support for myself and the department heads.
But did they have the choice of joining the union and elected not to?
It is the position. It is generally a higher grade position, so it is paid at a higher level than our other clerical positions, and when they are hired, they understand that these are different types of positions, at-will positions, given the nature of the work involved.
Alderman Rainey? Moving along?
Before we move along.
Sorry, Alderman Jean Baptiste.
I don't know whether somebody who was hired 20 years ago is operating today from the standpoint that they're an at-will employee and they're excluded from, you know, sort of equal treatment, when other similarly situated employees in the same, who perform similar functions, are being considered for cuts. So, the at-will position, the at-will classification at this particular point in time, I don't think was the determining factor. So, when you argue that, when, in other positions, when you're making certain decisions, I've not heard that being the key factor to determine whether or not you choose to eliminate one position or the other.
And I don't believe it was a key factor here. I think it's important, when you talk about the disposition of the employees' rights, of the ability to transfer to another position, it's, in the context of that discussion is the only reason I've raised the particulars there. But in the decision here, we looked at of those seven clerical positions, which position was adding the least value to us serving the residents and businesses of the city of Evanston? That was the primary, the primary evaluation point.
Okay, so, what we are saying is that the director will not be getting a secretary in the future.
That's correct.
And he'll continue to do his own work on his own. I'm not sure whether that's the most efficient...
I've shown him how with the toner cartridges and the pressure, so...
I'm not sure whether that's the most efficient use of, you know, that level of executive directorship, but without any kind of specific support staff. But, you know, be that as it may, I think that the council has a position on that and generally supports the cuts, but I still think that, I don't think it's the fairest way to go about it.
Mr. Walker, did you? Mr. Walker?
Oh, Madam Mayor, I was just going to indicate that in terms of the decisions with any of these position reductions, it's really based upon what we need. That applies to the... That applies to the inspector position, that applies to the clerical staff in, in a department of, of 36 people. You do not need seven support staff.
Thank you.
It's based upon need.
Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to have City Manager go over the revenue items on our recommended adjustments and reductions chart, beginning with, if, if you wouldn't mind if I could go down the list about the ones that I'm concerned about. The first would be.
Could you tell us the document you're looking at?
The recommended reduction adjustments, citywide budget adjustments, the chart, the spreadsheet, they're all the same. Does it matter?
Mr. Lyons is handing out the latest hard copy of that, and we'll also put it up on the screen.
I have it on my own.
Alderman Rainey, that's the document?
Yes, uh-huh. Certainly is. All right, first item I'd like to look at is, or I'd like some discussion on, is the transfer from the township for community purchase services, the $400,000. Could you just explain for us how that happens?
Mr. Lyons.
Mayor and Alderman Rainey, we did actually make a change on that based on our process last year. The township, after we adopted the budget, the township elected to pay all of the contractors in this case directly. So while last year we had a revenue in for the money being paid from the township, and then we pay the bill, what in fact happened was our expenses came in lower and the township paid the bills directly. So as what you see on the screen right now is, you don't see a revenue any longer for that. We took the revenue away and we will reduce the mental health board budget by the $400,000, and it will literally be tracked in the township expenses. So it will be paid from township funds. We can have our supplementary listing of all of the mental health activities at the approved level that council looked at, but in the city's program budget in that business unit will have $400,000 less, and that was at the request of the township that they would pay the bills directly.
Okay, does, won't it be $500,000 because we were asked to cut another $200,000 for mental health and we restored $100,000? Anybody?
Just let me take a look at the worksheet.
I mean, I know we did it.
And in the, as a part of the Health and Human Services reductions, that's where that $100,000 already was.
No, no, we were asked, we were asked on this chart right here to eliminate $200,000 aside from whatever the township is doing, having nothing to do with it. The mental health board lobbied us and argued that, you know, couldn't do that. We restored $100,000, I think at our last meeting.
Yes, and, and if I can call your attention to the line that we're on right now.
What number is it?
It is line 37. It says Health and Human Services, Dental and Mental Health added back. So we started off with $393,000 in cuts, and you can see the formula says add back $153,000, that was the dental, the net for dental.
That's the dental, okay.
And then add back $100,000 for giving back the $100,000 in the mental health board cuts. We're giving us, and let me move off of that cell, just giving us a net $140,000 reduction in Health and Human Services after all of that was done.
All right, let's move on. Reimbursement for school districts from school resource officers. The original chart had $290,000. What do you have now? You still, you still have $290,000. I need.
I thought, I'm having a hard time seeing.
I, I can't see any of that regardless.
You can get it through.
But it's on, it's on here, Dolores.
I know, I'm, I'm trying to follow up there because I'm.
We'll get the lines, lights turned off.
And I would go to the police department line, the, the police department line, their total cuts that were above.
No, no, I'm, no, no, please, please. I'm up on the top in the revenue column. I'm at $290,000 in revenue adjustments for reimbursement for school districts for school resource officers. What's, where are we? And, and on the sheet you handed out, we still have $290,000 of revenue in that line. I want to know.
Want to know where it is?
I know everything there is to know about it.
We have been meeting with District 65 and District 202 on this issue. They have agreed to take this on through funds that they are receiving in addition from the TIPS. And so we'll be coming back to the council with an agreement with the two school districts in order to make up this, this funding over the next, what, Marty, 30 days, 60 days?
That's our goal. We, we have had discussions and we've been, have a redraft of the one TIP agreement already, and we need to have the draft of the actual school liaison agreement as well. But they, we have been in touch and we're still in agreement that they can move forward.
Let me ask this question. Do we have relief guaranteed from the $290,000 from the school districts?
We have a oral agreement with them, we do not have a written agreement.
See, what happened last year was we had discussions like this where, well, it's, it's going to be fine, it's going to be fine. And then it wasn't fine. And we got, and ended up in a big mess. I, I need to know, I mean, how can we responsibly, when we're cutting positions, I mean, that's like $290,000, that could be, what, three positions easily? And yet we really don't know if we have that money. I mean, we really don't know if we have it. Are we getting it from the high school or from the District 65?
It would be on the, the basis of their actual expenditures. So there's two officers for the school, the 65 school district and one officer for 202. So it would be on that prorata basis.
Two-thirds, one-third.
Right, and at, last year, we ended up taking this off of the table completely, and it was not used to balance the budget because we could not get to that agreement.
Oh, I didn't mean this, this line item. I meant all the revenue sources.
I understand what you're saying.
Yes.
And, and Madam Mayor Alderman Rainey, we will share with you next week, and we might as well talk about it right now, there are several pieces of this ultimate plan that require others' consent. This is one of them. There are collective bargaining issues involved. I'm going to recommend to the council, I guess I will recommend to the council right now, that you direct me to do this over 60 days and that I will come back to you in 60 days if we do not have resolution to all of these issues that require consent of others. Because we have collective bargaining issues, we have this agreement, we have the yard, you know, the yard waste fee and the refuse fee, I think will play out over additional time. But the lion's share of the things that require consent of others, I think we'll know in 60 days. So I'm going to ask you to direct me to come back to you in 60 days if we do not have the consent of these organizations to come back with a plan for additional reductions in order to balance any funds that we've not recovered by meeting with these various groups.
You know, I heard, I heard, I heard today that the high schools even causing difficulties in negotiating with ECMC about allowing them to be present in the high school during the day. So I'm, and that's not really costing them anything, so I'm, I'm getting a little nervous about that. But, you know, what other choice do we have? I, I think it's irresponsible to leave revenue in the revenue line that we don't know we're getting, but I'll, I'll do that. Let's move on to yard waste fee. We're claiming.
I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, it's Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The $290,000 covers the full expense for the school resource officers, is that right? And I'm guessing that this agreement will require the approval of both school boards, school district boards?
That's correct.
In those discussions, do the school districts understand that the city is not prepared to fund the school resource officers, that it wouldn't be part of our budget unless there's agreement in place?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alderman John Baptiste?
So why do we have, if they understand that we will not fund these officers, then why do we, why not plan, make plans for this money right now?
We are. That's, that's our plan. That's our proposal to you, council.
So, so at this particular point in time, we intend to use these funds, and if the school board decides not to go along with it, then we have to find revenue from some other sources?
Or eliminate the positions.
What, the implications then are what?
Alderman John Baptiste, members of the council, on this particular line item, if we are not reimbursed by the school districts through the renegotiation of the TIP agreement, the option would be to find, general fund revenues other places to fund these officers or to eliminate the positions.
When we do the, when we pay out the, the TIP money to the schools, do they come from our funds to pay out, or will they come from the county?
They come from city sources, Alderman John Baptiste.
So we could very well withhold that payment until we, you know?
We could, and again, I, I have every indication that this is moving forward. Also, I'm asking that the council on this, plus the collective bargaining issues, give me a fairly short leash of 60 days. If we have not resolved these issues in 60 days, to come back to you with additional solutions. I, I agree with Alderman Rainey 100% about her being concerned, and I think that we have to look practically at moving forward with the beginning of the budget year, but also understand that there are a few things that are not completely are, under our total control that are part of this budget solution, and this is one of them.
Okay, what role does the bargaining unit have to, to play in this?
In this particular issue, for the $290,000, none. It's, it's some of the others as we go through the expense adjustment list.
Alderman Rainey?
All right, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move that we retain the $290,000 in the revenue column, and were the two school districts not to agree to fund these officers, they will not be provided by the city of Evanston.
It's been moved and seconded. Seeing no further lights, City Clerk to call the roll. Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman John Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover? Nine. Nine to nothing, the motion passes. And as Alderman Rainey likes to point out, this is a real meeting.
It's not a pretend. Next item is yard waste fees.
Did that address 60 days?
Well, he's going to do that in the next of the plan. Next item is yard waste fees. We are, do we still have the $950,000 in yard, $950,000 additional revenue in yard waste I, and I know other members of the council, are 100% supportive of Suzette's efforts to, you know, make people pay for what they use. And this is, is just a classic case of where yard waste needs to be paid for by those who are using the service. However, however, I believe the, the sticker, the yard waste sticker is $1.75, is that right? Is it $1.75? Pardon me?
That's correct.
Yeah. So what we're saying, what we're saying is that at $950,000, we are going to have to sell 542,857 stickers in order to generate the $950,000. Now, I know there's that $25 charge that I'm not accounting for, for having the can that we all bought, thinking that that meant that we were going to have our yard waste picked up, and now we're being told we're going to be charged for it. But that's what that means. That means that each person, if you divided it by, you know, like 10,000 household, it's, it's like $95 for stickers. I believe, I believe that we are overly optimistic in indicating we're going to generate $950,000. Now, we can sit around and say that we, you know, we're, we're not thinking about individual people, whether we like them or not, in jobs or not. This is a whole different area. This is generating revenue, and the reality of what's being proposed, I think, is way out of sync with what's really going to happen. So I, I'm thinking if we raise a half a million with yard waste stickers, we're going to be lucky. And I think that projecting these revenues is absolutely, and I, I know the council doesn't, doesn't focus a lot on this, but it's absolutely as critical as the cuts we're making. So you just can't say, without really getting into this, that you're going to generate almost a million dollars, $950,000 from yard waste stickers. It's, it's not going to happen. And I think we should have a discussion about what we think is a more realistic number. And also, it would be good, before we have the discussion, to hear how that number was arrived at.
Okay.
Oh, there you are.
Yes, I am, I'm sorry.
She snuck up on us.
I believe I provided the detail in terms of how we came up with that with Alderman, response to Alderman Burris. It is based on 10,000 households having two bags of, of yard waste over a 28-week period. The yard waste season is actually 36 weeks. So we, and we actually have, we are serving 20,000 households, including the single-family households and the condominiums. So we based our estimate on 50% of the households having two bags. So we tried to be conservative in our estimate, but after you raised the concern, I ran some worst-case scenario options. And the first thing that I looked at is the total amount of yard waste we collect per year. And it translates into about 11 million pounds. And the average weight of the bags that we collect can range between 20 to 40 pounds. If we were, all of our yard waste was bagged, so the total revenue generated just from bags alone would be between 5 million and a million, I mean, sorry, 500,000 and a million. If, you know, at the higher end, if all the bags were 40 pounds, the low end being 20 pounds or the lower weight. Then I also did a worst-case scenario, if everybody switched to carts. In the first year, if everybody switched to carts, right now we have about, it was based on about 30% of the households, I'm sorry, 1,500 carts being out there in service already. And if everybody else switched to carts, between the, the revenue $25 annual charge for carts and the, the cost of the cart purchase, it would be over a million dollars in revenue if everybody switched to carts. So even in our worst-case scenario, the worst-case scenario, the minimum amount of revenue that we would collect, and I think you said this, would be $500,000. But the biggest key for making this work is the enforcement piece, you know, for us to be out there monitoring what's going on, to make sure that people are complying with the rules. And that's why the reorganization in. And that's why the reorganization includes that solid waste coordinator position, because what we have dealt with in the past with a lot of the sanitation issues and the inspections in the right-of-way are not being performed. So we're going to take up that responsibility within Streets and Sanitation to perform those functions.
Alderman Nguyen?
Well, thank you, Suzette. I wanted you to go back over, that was what I wanted to have done. So you've given us the worst-case scenario number. What's the best-case scenario number? I know we won't-
The best-case scenario is over a million dollars, a million 45,000.
And then, did you look at any other communities? I know the data we have here is most accurate for ourselves, but did you, to generate your numbers, did you look at other communities as well?
Only from, not in terms of the revenue, I looked at their sticker charges. I didn't look at how much revenue they generate. I relate our revenue to how much yard waste we generate versus, a lot of the other communities don't generate as much yard waste, so that's really what it was based on. When I went back to backtrack the numbers, I based it on our weight number, I mean, our waste number.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Burris?
I just have a question about, clarification, you said we'll have more on enforcement issues?
We'll have more enforcement capabilities.
And could you just explain what that means overall? I mean, I think when we talk about yard waste, people don't necessarily think there's an enforcement piece of yard waste. And I think you said also with the parkways, and the reason I bring it up is something that I had talked about previously, about the parkway trees really aren't the residents' responsibility necessarily, they're the cities, but the resident, it's falling on the resident's yard in their parkway, and then they're responsible for picking it up, and then responsible for paying to dispose of it as well. So that seems maybe not necessarily fair. And then if they, the leaves drop and they don't pick it up, and they're not really their leaves, and it's not their parkway, but then they're given a ticket because they didn't pick up the leaves that really aren't theirs. I know it's a sort of a circular argument, but I think there might be some legal issues with this as well. So I just wonder if that's been addressed, or if there's anywhere else that's been an issue.
Okay. When I was speaking, when I was speaking in terms of enforcement, it was not relative to leaves not being raked that are on the, that people leave on the grass in the parkway, or in their yard for that matter, because we don't police that. However, we do not allow people to rake leaves in the street. And so if we have a lot of scenarios where most people already bagged their yard waste, and they will put it back, but we do have a tremendous problem with, whether it's contractors or even people that are taking care of their yards themselves that are raking out into the street. So we will be able to enforce, enforce those activities. Also, in terms of the stickers, in the conversation that I had with Alderman Rainey regarding the concerns when we had stickers in the past, was that there were bags of yard waste that were just left in the alleys without stickers, weren't being collected, and we didn't really have a process to address that. So by having an enforcement piece, we would be able to address that more immediately rather than, because at the end of the season, we have to pick it up anyway. So, because, you know, eventually if it keeps piling up and piling up, it blocks the right-of-way. So, so to make sure that everybody abides by the rules.
You can do a follow-up, then Alderman Tandem.
Yeah. In that regard, I believe years ago, probably before I lived here, that people did rake their leaves in the street, and it was picked up. And I think this past year, several residents said, well, I pushed it into the street and it was never picked up. So I think as part of this, there may be an education issue here about how we go about doing yard waste. I know that you're very good about doing that and letting people know what's going on, but particularly for this issue, people still believe they can push the leaves in the street and they will be picked up. So I think we need an education piece along with this as well. Thanks. Thanks for letting me.
Alderman Tandem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A few questions. When you refer to all, are you referring to 20,000 residences?
Oh, you mean for the cart scenario?
Yes.
No, that was really based on the single-family number and a small percentage of condos, because the condos really don't generate as much yard waste as the households do.
There's a certain transition period this year because we're switching over. Has that been accounted for in this? I mean, your estimate of 950,000 is closer to the optimistic high end than it is to the worst-case scenario. Does that include loss of revenue because of the transition, that we're not?
Well, the transition for, it doesn't impact yard waste, because yard waste starts April 1st, the ordinance is on the books, we'll be ready April 1st with stickers and ready to go. And they will be available at, Jules has agreed to sell them in Dominix, and so we're trying to get all the education pieces together. We do an At Your Disposal newsletter in terms of educating what the refuge policies are relative to all aspects of sanitation. We also, during, before we get to leaf season, which is when the rake-outs occur, the highlights every year, since I've been here and for several years before that, we always advise people not to rake out in the streets, and when they do, we actually put flyers on the door advising them of the rules so that they don't do it the next week. So I'm just saying that some people, it's not that they may not be hearing the message, they just don't like it. So.
One last thing. Will you be able to monitor the success of, well, I guess, generating the amount of revenue that we're anticipating and that, and what, because this is very seasonal work, I imagine it peaked, it's strong in the spring, slows down in the summer, really strong in the fall. Is it, is it going to be easy to monitor that? No, at some point-
Yes, we'll be able to come back to you in June, after we get done with the spring, and let you know how our projections matched up with the reality. And then, if we need to make an adjustment at that point, we would be, you know, you know, because the, in the summer, you're right, in July, in August, and even the early part of September, the yard waste has shrunk down considerably. But we still would exhibit savings. I wanted to also point out that we have a lot of contractors that do, landscapers, that actually have businesses that bring their landscape from other cities back to Evanston, and we're also collecting their yard waste as well. So if they do that, they'll have to pay, and if they don't do it, we won't have to collect it. So we'll still either experience the savings from the disposal end or from revenue generated.
Thank you.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In certain parts of the sixth and seventh wards, we simply rake our leaves over to the other side of Isabella.
That's fantastic.
The cost of the yard waste carts is $82.50. Does that, is that directly tied to our actual cost for the carts?
The carts, at the time when we established the fee, they fluctuate with the petroleum prices, believe it or not, because of the way that they are manufactured. And they've been as high as $60 a cart and as low as about $42 a cart. And it also is based on how, the quantity that we purchased at the time. And the additional fee is because we provide maintenance to the carts, we replace lids for the life of the cart, the wheels, so there is a fee attached on top of the cost of the cart.
Thank you, Ms. Eggleston. I wondered if we could, at some point, consider building in an incentive to purchase the carts, reduction in that price for residents that may be tied to the savings we realized through reduced workers' comp claims. You know, tie in an incentive structure to use the carts, getting residents away from using the bags.
Yes, I think that that's something to consider. We certainly could consider, you know, in the future going forward, we really need to see how many people would actually switch over. And switching from bins to carts, what we've noticed for recycling is that people don't have room in the alleys to store all of the carts. So I think that the people that have the space capacity will switch over to the carts, and I just don't know what that number is. But if that number is substantial enough, we should be able to do what you're recommending.
Alderman Grover, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I, if I may, the other part of this was that, I think she said it at the beginning, but also in purchasing the cart, they're already getting a big incentive over the amount that they can put into the cart versus into the bags, so they will already be getting a huge savings. We do want to incent folks into the cart, even though long-term it may mean less revenues, we know it'll be better for operations overall.
And I've lost children in those carts, they're so big.
Alderman, Alderman Rainey?
Well, the carts are great, but now those of us who have carts, or those who buy carts, are also going to be charged another $25 to have them picked up, which I, I'd like to know, I don't have before me what that revenue would be, just the $25 for picking up your cart. But what I wanted to say, Suzette, was could you walk us through what the process will be? You come down the alley, the yard waste disposal people come down the alley, and they see two or three households that have 10, 15 bags out with no sticker. What happens?
It's similar to what we do for our special pickup program. Those calls, when they drive down the alley, they actually call them in too, because we were running into trouble with a lot of people alleging fly dumps, et cetera, et cetera. So to alleviate that from happening, and also, people never calling in for a special pickup. So we decided that you don't have to call in anymore. If it's out there in 48 hours, we're going to pick it up and charge anyway.
I'll call in.
And so, well, yes, you do. So when they, on their-
Let's talk about the leaves.
Right, on the, on the, on the collection day, they actually call in where the problem areas are.
And what happens?
And then once, we have, now we'll have a solid waste coordinator that'll be able to go out, and we have stickers, when they're out there, they'll put a sticker on and let you know why they didn't pick it up, which is what we do with any type of garbage that we don't collect. We put a big orange sticker on it, and there's a checkbox to say, you know, you have to call in our office. And then either one or two things will happen, depending on, if they're unwilling to purchase the stickers, to put on the bags, to allow us to collect it, we'll collect it anyway, and it'll become a special pickup fee.
And what will that be? Will you charge them $1.75 a bag, or will you have another fee?
No, because that will be a separate collection. It will be the $25 special pickup fee that we have established by ordinance at a minimum.
And how soon will those bags get picked up?
That will still be the 48-hour rule that's associated with the special pickup.
Seeing no further lights, I have a question. City manager, if the, instead of cutting all the managers by 5%, if we exempted those managers who have served 25 years or more, what would the budget impact be?
Wait, we're not finished with, are you on?
Nobody had any more lights.
I'm sorry.
Now they do.
After looking at the calculations by Ms. Eggleston, I, I think the 950 is a little high. And if we're trying to be realistic about really the revenues that are coming in so we don't get caught for this year, like we did last year with what we thought, I would feel more comfortable reducing that amount by a minimum of 50,000. I just, it would be great if we can get the 950. I just don't think that's really, you know, realistic this year, and it may never be realistic. So if we could even reduce it to 900,000, if anybody has any thoughts on, on that, that'd be great.
Alderman Wilson?
I do have reservations pretty much about all of the revenue line items, just concerns that we're not going to meet the targets. But it could be a factor of, you know, how people actually use or implement the yard waste, whether the permit fees are lower than what we expected. So that's why I think this highlights the need to have some cushion reserve built into the number we come in at. So I think it's important to try to come in at that number, you know, not the 9.5, but something that gives us, I was hoping for somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000, but, you know, at least some hundreds of thousands of dollars to have room for, you know, missing any of these targets. So I'm okay with leaving that number if we have some reserves built in at the other end.
Alderman Rainey?
Well, I, you know, I'm going to really argue this. I think, I think that the best budgeting practices, if you can't, if you can't get it exactly on target, is to be conservative, not to be aggressive and such as this. It's not a conservative number, it's going to get us in trouble, and my recommendation, which I think still is over the top, is 750,000. I just think we're looking at a big problem here, and there's just no point in overestimating for a feel-good sense about this budget. It's, you know, and I want us to talk about permit fees and all sorts of things here, because the revenue is just so important. And to have a brand-new program with a brand-new system, to expect that we almost reach the best-case scenario is just not making sense to me. Yes, I hope we get a million dollars, but I think there's not a chance. And I think the extra effort we're going to have to make going up and down alleys, stickering bags, et cetera, it's, that's all going to cost money as well. So I think we should be as focused on this as we are on the cuts, and this, I think, is way too high a projection. And I, you know, I don't think to generate extra revenue on the bottom line is the way to do it. I think we should be realistic above the line. I would, I would move to amend that to 750.
Second. Alderman Nguyen?
Ms. Eggleston, when we've switched over recently to these, to the new big blue recycling carts, what's been the response? I mean, how have people adjusted to having the new carts? Do people get with the program?
The majority of the people are excited, delighted, but we do have some, some issues relative to the residents that are collected on the parkway that want, particularly if only their recycling is collected on the parkway. We have several that both are collected on the parkway, there's a non-issue when the garbage is already out there, the recycling. And it really has to do with the size of the cart. We've been able to mediate those by downgrading to a smaller cart. When we first did the initial distribution, the smaller carts were reserved just for seniors and those who needed a smaller cart.
Okay.
Now we open it up to everybody, and that-
The percentage of people who have their recycling collected just on the parkway must be very small, because I can't even think of anyone in my ward that has that.
Yes, yes, it is. And it's based on, you know, the recycling, the trucks that Groot uses, they're actually, they're bigger than ours.
Okay.
And so our trucks can make tighter turns than they can, and so there are some alleys that the bigger trucks, you know, and it's only a five-feet-length distance difference, but it makes a huge impact in some of those alleys that are really tight.
Turning angles.
Mm-hmm.
But in terms of people understanding to, you know, that, and cooperating, I mean, I'm, we're filling ours every week, and, so, I mean, I'm assuming that other people are doing the same thing.
Where we have had the higher recycling percentage areas, in terms of bins, we've had much more recycling participation in terms of the carts. We've had very few incidents of people actually putting garbage in the carts. And, you know, once again, Groot actually will put a sticker on those, because they won't collect them. And so we ask them to transfer, and if they don't, we charge a special pickup fee.
That's called letting your 12-year-old take out the recycling. I, you know, I am comfortable with this 9.5 number. I mean, as Alderman Wilson said, it does give a cushion. I think it incentivizes all of us to make an effort to educate the public. We've had a lot of different changes in our garbage and yard waste pickup during all the time. I've lived here in Evanston, I lived here when we did rake it all into the street, and then we discovered that it was $600,000 a year that it cost to the city. That was 10 or 15 years ago. That was 10 or 15 years ago. We moved to larger carts, recycling, we moved to larger recycling carts. And those adjustments have been made. And I think people are now even more aware, because of our new recycling carts, that, that yard waste and garbage is going to be picked up somewhat differently. And there are different possibilities. You know, I still have people remind me that Evanston once picked up garbage three times a week. There are not as many of you out there. So I think that, that the 9.5 is, is a reasonable number, and that we should make every effort to educate people even more and, and accept that as something that's not a best-case scenario, but is reasonable.
Alderman Rainey?
Well, there's absolutely no comparison between the way this is going to work and the receipt of new recycling carts. Everybody recycles, we've always had a cart, we've always had a bin, and now we just have something with wheels on it. This requires you to go out of your house and to make a purchase of stickers. That's the whole issue here. People, do you remember when we went to stickers?
Yes.
Or yard waste? Do you remember the trouble we had in the alleys? Now, I know Suzette says we're going to have, you know, special pickups and all that, and that's fine, we'll do that. But this, this is not going to generate this kind of money the first year. It just isn't going to do it, because it's not a matter of, oh, should I put my recycling in a bin with wheels or a bin without wheels? This is a matter of, oh, I not only have to buy the bags, but then I have to go and buy the stickers. And, I mean, that's the whole issue, the added purchase of the stickers. I support the stickers 100%. I'd support it if it was $2. Doesn't matter to me. The point is the act of people having to do it. And, you know, based on 10,000 houses, that's $95 for stickers to make this number a real number.
Madam Mayor, may I just make a quick comment?
That's, that's the only problem I have. I, I know it's nice to have cushions, but that's not how you do a budget. You don't build in revenue cushions. You just don't do that. You make a conservative estimate.
And I completely agree with you, Alderman Rainey. One of the problems, as I recall, with the prior sticker program was the difficulty in getting them. And that was the great frustration, is that they were not as readily available as people wanted them to be. And so that was, that was why we had non-cooperation. People just couldn't get them.
You could either buy a bag with Evanston on it, which all the grocery stores had. Remember, the Evanston bags? Or you could buy the stickers. And I don't recall that that was an issue at all. But anyway, it's-
But, but may I just comment on one other thing? If, if, if Alderman Rainey, you would be willing to raise the sticker price to $2 a bag, then maybe that's the way we go, to make sure that we have-
Then we probably have to put it down to 500,000.
No, I mean-
My point in saying that, Melissa, was only to indicate that I'm very supportive of the stickers, that people paying for what they use. Because some people compost and have no-
I do, right. So my, my point, though, is that maybe we should raise the sticker price.
If that's a motion, I second it.
Well, I think there's another motion on the floor.
Okay, that's right.
Just remember, everybody, this came from her and not-
And, and we offer free composting sessions, learning how to do it at the Ecology Center, which is going to remain open.
And little maps to how to get to Isabella.
To take your leaves.
It's been moved and seconded that we reduce the amount of revenue from 950 to 750. So anyone who wants to speak to that issue, I still have Alderman Grover and Alderman Holmes. Who do you want to speak to that?
I want to speak to the issue, but not that. I want to speak to the education piece of this in terms of, Ms. Eggleston, if, if you mentioned Dominick's and Jewel. But could you also extend that to maybe, to try to negotiate with maybe Walgreens and Home Depot, where other people buy bags, so that people will know that there are a variety of places that they would be able to pick up the stickers as well?
Yes, the, the, the issue is some of the, because we did talk about even Ace Hardware, some of them want to charge us a fee. We're going to the places where they will provide them for free. And so that, that is the issue. And we will have them available at the Civic Center as well. And we're still contacting, and I'll make sure we contact the Walgreens as well, to make sure that-
Perhaps each Alderman could sell them.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Ms. Eggleston. As to the yard waste carts themselves, do we have an adequate supply for purchase in time for the opening of our collection season, for those who decide they really are incentivized to use the carts rather than bags?
We will. We do not, at the moment, we have not made the purchase yet. But we, we plan to, and have them available in advance of April 1st.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further lights on this Alderman Burris.
So I just want to clarify. Alderman Wen, you believe that the $950,000 is a, is, I think you said it was not a high mark. It was adequate. So I believe that if you really believe that, then six months, we should track it. In six months from now, if we are not on target, we make other budget cuts. I do not believe that we are at 950. There is no way we're going to hit that number. And so if we're not going to hit it in six months, we have spring season, then we make a decision that we're not going to make that 950. We have to find other cuts. And I also want to clarify what Alderman Wilson, you were saying is, were you saying that we should basically pad the revenue budget? Or were you saying that you, we need extra money in our reserves in case we do not meet the revenue? Because I, I just wanted to clarify, because Alderman Wen said, I agree with Alderman Wilson on the, the having extra revenue in the budget, but I, I may have just misunderstood what both of you said.
You definitely misunderstood what I said. I absolutely do not believe we should pad the revenue, to the contrary. I feel strongly that I don't think we're going to hit all of our revenue projections, you know, across the board. So for that reason, I think that we should have some money as reserves built in on the cuts.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
I know that Alderman Rainey moved to reduce, to reduce the projected revenue there by 200,000, but I thought that Alderman Burris had also proposed, I don't know whether it was an amendment, you know, to reduce it by 900,000. So I'm not sure what's on the table really right now.
To 900,000?
The motion to reduce it to 750.
750. So, I mean, did, was your proposal to amend? I don't know what the interplay is.
I actually didn't make a motion. I just said, I threw it out as a discussion piece.
So the only motion on the table right now is to reduce it to 750. Okay, thank you.
All right, it has been moved and seconded to reduce the $950,000 in yard waste fee revenue to 750,000. City clerk, could we, acting city clerk, I'll get in trouble with Rodney. Could we please call the roll? Alderman Rainey? Alderman Burris? Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman John Baptiste?
No.
Alderman Wen?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Holmes?
No.
Alderman Tendem?
No.
Alderman Grover?
No, thank you.
7-2.
7 to 2, the motion fails. Alderman Burris?
I would like to make a motion on the six-month review, and if we do not meet on target for revenue projection, that we make other cuts in the budget.
Second.
Alderman Wilson?
Yeah, I just think, you know, and, and we should be making quarterly reviews of where we stand across the board. So I don't know that we necessarily need to say, okay, on this line item. I think we're going to have to look at all the line items and see where we stand. And it's likely that we are going to have to make cuts as we, as we go, just as we had to do this current year. You know, we had to stop purchasing, we had to make a lot of adjustments during the current year. So, you know, I don't know that we necessarily need to specifically tie it to this, but we're going to have to keep a close eye on revenues and costs across the board.
So are you amending, you have to amend that to include?
I, I don't even know that, I don't, I don't see the need for a motion. I just think it's the city, the city staff's job, the city manager's job, to provide us with ongoing information on a regular basis. So I would be surprised and very disappointed if we didn't get that kind of information on an ongoing basis. So I would expect, you know, as soon as we have numbers for the first month, you know, I expect those things to come out and, and to see where we stand, so. I'm just making an observation that I don't know that we need that specific.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
We get monthly reports anyway, as to the revenue we're getting in. This year, mid-year, we projected, I think, $4 million, you know, deficit. And I don't know, how did you deal with that, city manager?
Took the money from-
Alderman Jean Baptiste, member of the council. The council's direction was to use up to $2 million from reserves, and then $2 million in cuts. And as we stand, with two weeks left, we looked that the cuts will, have been more effective than we had anticipated, so we're looking at the take from reserves to be a little bit less than that $2 million.
Do we know how much then?
No, now that, I don't have that with me, but I can provide that in a communication to the council early next week.
The order of magnitude is probably a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Alderman Tendem?
Actually, I do agree with Alderman Burris. This, this is a particularly large amount of money, a large amount that we had considered cutting. It's also a very irregular season. It's going to be very hard to track without some greater understanding. And I just think if we, you know, if we do it by quarters or six months, six months is a more reasonable period, I think, because it averages out more. But I think this does need some special attention because of the amount of money and because it's such an irregular season.
Alderman Rainey?
Well, I'm going to recommend to Alderman Burris that you make a reference to Administration and Public Works, and that we make this as a regular project on the part of the committee, because yard waste is a matter assigned to Administration and Public Works. And this is a massive change in this program, and it should be followed. So I would suggest you make that reference.
Alderman Burris, does that work for you?
That works for me.
All right. Seeing no further lights.
You know, regarding the, that projection, though, I am attracted to the reduction by $50,000. I think that, you know, that's more reasonable. I mean, I think we're pretty optimistic. It will have a level of difficulties that we'll have to really, really manage. And we'll get some pushback from the community as well. But I think that I could live with a reduction of $50,000 in projection. So I would move that.
Hi, it's been moved and seconded that the revenue projections be reduced by 50,000. City, acting city clerk, could we have a roll call vote? Alderman Rainey? Alderman Burris? Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Wen? Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Holmes? Alderman Tendem? Alderman Grover?
No, thank you.
4 to 5, the motion fails. No, it's withdrawn.
Was it withdrawn?
Alderman Burris is happy with Administration and Public Works. So we are back to my question of long, long ago. If we, if, what would be the impact on the budget if we removed, if we exempted those managers who have worked for the city for 25 years or more from the 5% cut?
Madam Mayor, this is referring to the below-the-line reduction that remains for the council's reference on the flip side of the page that was distributed this morning. The 5% salary reduction for all managers, that is $150,000 for all managers. We anticipate it'd be $50,000, $55,000, $55,000 change if that was, if those with 25 years of seniority or more with the city were exempted. So that would take this down to a $95,000 cut, if you wish to make that adjustment.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I, I certainly understand that cut, because it has directly to do with the salary and the implications of that. What I am wondering is, could we make a, an adjustment in, for example, the health insurance payments for people who have been here for that period of time that would have no impact on their salary and in fact would have more positive implications on their income tax? Because benefits paid by the employee are deducted from the salary before taxes, is that correct? So what I'm saying is, I think we need all these cuts, but I think they can be adjusted, and I would agree not to cut 5% of their salary. But could we transfer that 5% to some other place so that their salary isn't affected, in terms of their ongoing pension and retirement issues?
Madam Mayor, Alderman Rainey, are you looking below the line? So to look for $150,000 of other cuts to benefits to managers?
No, I thought it was $55,000.
Well, if, if, Alderman Rainey, you're referring to the entire group or just the group that's with, under Mayor Tisdale's motion?
Yes, absolutely, just her.
I didn't make a motion, I'm the mayor.
Oh, okay.
But it's 5% salary reduction, all managers, but hers comes out, what is the 25-year number?
That, that's a $55,000. So, so the cut would be 95. So you're saying then for those that are 20-
$55,000, it would be transferred someplace else to them.
We, we could, we could do the math on that. I think that would probably mean that they would take on their entire health insurance.
It would not, yeah, it would not be that large. One of the things that, if it's 50, well, if it's $55,000, though, you're talking about, how many people was it? 10 people, so 500, 5,500 per on average. So that's the amount, for instance, that would have to be redistributed to the health insurance deduction, which would make it a-
I was just trying to-
Well, it would, you would see, though, just to follow it through, it'd be about $470 a month, and then that's tax-free, so there's a 25% savings there to them, and it also helps their pension.
Alderman Wen? Alderman Rainey, are you done? Alderman Wen?
I just, I just, I'm a little confused about the numbers. I appreciate what Alderman Rainey was, was trying to do there with, using the tax code. But, so, city manager, this, the number that we have here would turn into, instead of 150, it would be 95,000?
Under the question from Mayor Tisdale, yes.
Yes, okay, so, okay, so the savings, the, I'm getting my number. Is it 55 or 95 that is going to be on this?
If, if, based on Mayor Tisdale's question, if this was changed so that it was a 5% reduction for all managers except those with 25 years of service or more, the savings would be $95,000.
And I under, so what, what we're hearing from staff is that this would apply to 10 managers?
Eight to 10.
Eight to 10? And then how many managers have not served 25 years?
Or eligible for retirement?
No, no, just-
Or total.
Yeah.
One moment, we'll count them up.
It's 49?
49.
Managers? Who would be receiving the 5% salary reduction?
That's correct.
Oh, okay, so it's 41 who have not served 25 years? Okay.
And, and how many who have not served 25 years are eligible for retirement?
14 or 15, depending on the day you pick.
Out of the 41?
Correct.
Okay.
Alderman Wen, are you done?
For now, I'm done, thank you.
Alderman Holmes?
Well, I would, since the mayor didn't make a motion, I would like to move, because she can't. I would like to move that we just restore the whole 5% to all managers. I, I would have a hard time. Again, I don't know who they are, I don't know all those positions, but just looking at the positions- But just looking at the positions, I think that we should restore that. Because to, just to take an arbitrary year of 25 years, what about 20? You know, it's a long time. So I would just recommend, I would like to move that we restore 150 for the salary reduction for all managers.
It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Rainey.
I'd like to know, what is the salary range from lowest to highest within that category?
Probably about $60,000 to 130. All right, seeing no...
Is there, could I ask one more question?
Yes, of course.
Is there any rule of thumb that those with longer seniority, greater seniority are in the, over the $100,000 range? I mean, is there any way you can?
There are five or six pay grades that managers fall into. Obviously, the $60,000 would be the lower end of the lowest grade. And...
What would be, could you, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but some of us, I have really no idea, and I know our constituencies don't. What, what, what would a person making $60,000 be doing? What?
Some example. It could be our revenue adjudication manager, our accounting manager. I'm trying to think of who else is in D-range. Business office coordinators. They're all exempt positions with supervisory responsibility that fall to the lower end of that salary range. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I'm trying to think back to when the 5% salary reduction was first mentioned by you. Was it at the first budget meeting? Was it at the beginning of the process?
It was at the beginning of the process.
Okay.
And there are two components, just for the refreshed memory of the council. Above the line, there is a 5% reduction for myself, the Assistant City Manager, and the department directors. What the council's talking about this morning is the below-the-line cut for the remainder of the management team.
Okay.
Alderman Burris.
Thank you for giving us the range, but could you also give us the median, not the mean, but the median of those salaries?
I'd have to calculate it. I don't know it off the top of my head.
I would say, Alderman Burris, that it's a higher number. That it's a number approaching the $100,000 range, probably between 90 and $100,000. We would have to do the math, but if I were to guess off the top of my head, that would be my guess.
Yeah, I think that that's a number that we really need. And once again, coordinate that, or put that number with what these folks are actually doing. And are we really overpaying? Our salaries are very high here at the city. And so if we had that median number, once again, I don't want the mean number because that muddies the waters with the $60,000 or the $65,000. But what are people actually doing and what their responsibilities are for $100,000? I think everybody needs to know that on the council, and everybody in the public needs to know what we're paying folks and what they're doing.
Alderman Nguyen.
Well, I wanted to speak...
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe Allen, did you want to?
Well, I wanted to speak in favor of Alderman Holmes's motion. I think that we've, you know, we've obviously been struggling with this budget for a long time. Those of us up here on the council are struggling in our own way. There, we've been working with city staff over this long period of time. For many of these people are looking at cutting, having the responsibility of cutting colleagues, possibly eliminating their own jobs in some instances. And this has been a really, really difficult year, and it's not the end. I mean, we're going to continue to have difficult years coming up that we're looking at. And this type of cut is a lasting cut. It doesn't mean that it's just that we've all cinched our belts in three notches for one year or two years. Even when the economy gets better, this 5% salary reduction will be, it will follow an employee for years to come. And I don't necessarily think that that's the best message to send to our staff. These are the folks who are, you know, if we were, if we were in the Navy, we'd say, these are all our chiefs. These are all our chief petty officers. They're the ones who have to make our organization run. And we need to make sure that they understand how valued they are and how important it is that during this very hard year, a couple of hard years that we're looking at, that our organization, which is going to be operating with much fewer resources in much more difficult times, that we all have to pull together. And so I don't think that reducing the salaries of 48 people by 5% is something that will impact them five years from now, 10 years from now, is the appropriate step to take. I think that we need to let the staff know that we realize how hard their jobs are and how difficult this past year has been for everyone. And so I would support Alderman Holmes in restoring all of the 5%. If it's necessary to look at something else that's a one-year budget tightening, I would support doing that, but not something that has such a powerful lasting effect.
Alderman Wilson.
I agree with Alderman Holmes and Alderman Nguyen that we really do need to show our support for the staff. I am curious, though, I know that I personally don't intend to, as we're going to go, as we're kind of going through the list of items here, to try to recapture anything else on the budget. But I'm interested to know from the rest of the group, are other people going to be trying to add more things back in? Because that's going to, that's going to affect my perspective on this item. If we're going to be, you know, going down another half million dollars of things that are, that people are trying to add back in, I think that would be instructive to kind of get a sense of that. Could we maybe do a poll down the line? It's not directly related to the motion, but I do think it's relevant.
Want us to promise not to do anything else?
No, I'm... I just want to get a sense of what people are looking at for what the other items are here.
As far as I'm concerned, we're only like four items down in the revenues. I've got a whole bunch more to go up there, so.
Well, I'm not talking about the revenue, I'm just talking about the cut.
But that's what I was, I tried to get us to begin talking about revenues, and now, and we still are talking about revenues. So I think we ought to stay on that for a while.
In other words, I don't think you're getting your...
I'm not, so.
Well, I want, Alderman Wilson, I want to respect that because I want to be very transparent about it. The only other thing that I would be interested in seeing restored is the other position. There's only one other position of a staff person, and that's in forestry. And I just think, and these are all below the line. And I really feel that it's important to do this in terms of staff morale. And it's the only position, the only other position that's left open. Other than that, that, staff-wise, that's the only thing that I'm interested in restoring. Other things I'm interested in cutting.
Okay, thank you for letting me know that.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Yeah. I would say the only other matter I would want to consider is to increase the furlough days by one more day. But other than that, yeah, it increases, you know, the revenue. It reduces the...
Add another furlough day?
Yeah, that's the only thing that I would do. But I support the, to not reduce the salaries of these managers.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm already thinking ahead, Alderman Jean Baptiste, that that may make some sense if we're looking then to restore the 5% to the managers. And wonder again, too, 5%? There's, there are some levels, too, below 5%. If we still wanted to realize some savings in those salaries, two and a half. You can work those numbers, but maybe adding the furlough day gets us to this, restoring the 5%. Thank you.
Alderman Rainey.
Can I just respond to one, one small thing about the reduction? As Alderman Grover is talking about different percentages. The problem here is that employees who are on the verge of retirement, once you've reduced that salary, then their pensions and everything else is impacted over a long-term basis. So I think that many of us who are looking at restoring this are thinking along those lines. So if you go 2%, it still impacts in the long run.
Right, and...
So the furlough day is an alternative to that.
And the motion, then, addressing those who have served Evanston for more than 25 years doesn't quite capture all of the employees who are eligible for retirement. There are still, by my reckoning, five or six.
But that's not, that's not the motion on the floor.
Right, I know, I know. I'm just saying that I understand the intent of it.
Alderman Rainey.
Sorry about that.
Well, I just, I do support the furlough issue, by the way. And also, in terms of adding things back in, I need a better understanding of the cuts that are going to take place in fleet services. I'm very concerned about that because I remember when cuts were made previously, there were issues with maintenance of our vehicles. But I want to say something about the 5% cut. I agree, we should think of another way to handle that amount of money. But to say that by suggesting it indicates, or by removing it indicates, that we have support for our remaining employees, I think what we really need to think about is that those employees who were being considered for the 5% cut are far more fortunate than those 50 employees or 40, however many it turned out to be, that have lost their jobs.
No question.
And so I think a 5% cut, were we not to have the pension issue and the retirement issue, would have been, would have been a blessing for some people as opposed to simply being eliminated after having served for years and years of good service. So I just want to make that clear, that nobody's ungrateful for any of the employees that we have, regardless of what cuts or how we're eliminating them. Everybody's grateful for all the hard work most of them have done. But I think that to minimize these loss of jobs is just wrong. And by being so overly patronizing of those who are remaining, I think reduces the importance of those who are losing their jobs. So I just wanted to say that. I just, I just feel horrible about what we're having to do here. So, but I do support not reducing the 5% and adding the furlough day.
Alderman Burris.
In reference to what Alderman Wilson was asking, also to be transparent, I have nothing that I want to add back in, stuff that I want to take back out, definitely, but nothing that I want to add back in. I just, I have real issues with, we're trying to balance the budget. We need to be fiscally responsible, and we're, I don't necessarily know that we're being as hard and looking at this budget as realistically as we can. And I think it's going to hurt us like it did last year, and nothing against the former council, but it was ambitious, and we need last year's budget, and it got us in trouble. And I think this budget will also get us in trouble if we don't have more in reserves, and we're not really looking very carefully at each of these lines. We keep putting things back in, and we keep saying, you know, we'll figure it out later, or maybe six months from now, we can check it out. Once again, I think we need to be realistic. I think we need to take a hard line again when we're saying, let's put this back in because we like so-and-so, or this is my pet project. This is an overall city issue. Just my...
Alderman Jean Baptiste. Okay. Alderman Fisk. All right, it has been moved and seconded to restore the 5% to all managers. Acting city clerk, could we have a roll call?
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
No.
Seven to two, the motion passes. Alderman Nguyen.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just want to follow up on the discussion that we just had. I would move that we add an additional furlough day, which I believe, according to our chart, would result in a cut of $180,000. An addition, an addition of $180,000. I think that this is a more appropriate belt tightening to take this year. The statistics I'm hearing, I don't know what Chicago is doing with their furlough days. Phoenix has 19 furlough days. The city of Seattle is requiring 10 furlough days. This would make us have five furlough days. And obviously, this is something that is a yearly decision-making so that if our economy improves, we won't have furlough days.
A second.
A second.
Madam Mayor.
City manager.
May I ask Alderman Nguyen if she would clarify her motion that this would be an additional unpaid holiday?
Yes, this would be an additional unpaid holiday. Is that the correct terminology?
Alderman Rainey. Okay. Alderman Holmes, did you want to speak to this?
No, I just wanted to clarify, it was going to be a total of five unpaid days.
Okay. All right, it has been moved and seconded that we add an unpaid holiday? City manager, is that how you want it to be recorded? Acting city clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye, thank you.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. Alderman Rainey.
Could we have just one more quick explanation for me and for the public? I'm sure everybody here remembers all the details. On the refuse fee, having to do, I believe, with the size of the garbage can that we're using?
Certainly. Suzette Aggleston, our interim public works director, can come back into the room and give that report.
And then after that, I want to talk about two other revenue sources. One is what is projected for next year for the real estate transfer tax? And what is projected for permits? We heard Mr. Walker talk about how reduced permits are going to be, permits, these are going to be next year. I want us to talk about what we're projecting.
The refuse.
Yes, the, excuse me, the refuse fees, the projected revenue is $500,000 for the year. And that is based on 30% of the residents converting over to a smaller garbage cart, and they will continue to pay the $695. And 70% retaining the 95-gallon cart that they have, and they would pay $1095.
So what, what are we going to do to, so this is one of those cases, for example, with magazine subscriptions. You order for a year, and then there's fine print that says if you don't do anything, you'll be charged for another year. So people have their regular garbage can. If they don't do anything, they're going to see what added to their water bill.
If they don't do anything, they will now pay $1095 as opposed to $695.
Listen up, everybody. All right. And if they don't want to pay extra on their water bill for garbage, they need to call up and ask.
They can call up and ask for a 65-gallon cart. However, if they have more than, if they fill more than a 65-gallon cart, they will still be charged $1095, and they will be converted back to a 95-gallon cart.
But I'm not thinking about those people because I think those people know that they have enough garbage to fill their current can. What I'm thinking about are the people out there who are, you know, individuals living alone, who have the big cart, who don't do anything, who, you know, all of a sudden, they see an increase in their charges. So I want to make sure that we let people know that they're, they have an option.
Yes, and we do have some seniors that have 65-gallon garbage carts currently. So yes, we will make sure our education and information is out there relative to all the changes.
I mean, I've never even seen one.
Well, I think back...
Well, I think back, I want to say when they did a cart distribution about seven or eight years ago, we got a lot of complaints. So their cart, you know, our carts are old, so they have been out there for a while. There are quite a few 65 gallons out there.
So I, I would like us, especially in the next water bill, maybe, to make a big deal about this issue so that, and, and you're very comfortable with this number. I'm, I'm not going to tinker with this number, but I.
Um, yes, I am.
Because I think it even could be bigger.
Yes.
Because people are going to sit around not knowing that they need to do something about.
That number is very conservative because in addition, there's additional cart fee that will increase to 695 and that is currently $2.50 per cart. So we were very conservative on this number.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Alderman Tendem, then Alderman Jean Baptiste, and then we're going to take a five-minute break.
Quick question. What happens when the person with the smaller cart, on occasion, has doubled the amount of garbage? Do they have to call for a special pickup or what, what happens? I seem to recall before that would, they would not be picked up.
They, they would, it would be a special pickup fee associated with exceeding the 65 gallon cart. What we currently have in place for those that have 95 gallon carts, and that will still remain, is that it's 95 gallons plus a 50 gallon garbage bag in addition to their cart. That program will still remain in effect. Before a 65 gallon, all you get is the container.
And what will they be charged if they had doubled or on occasion?
Yes, well, the, the special pickup fee is $25 for the first three cubic yards. That's the special pickup program. We propose to incorporate that into the, the contract. But as things stand, when the fees go into effect April 1st, it will be our normal special pickup program of $25 for the first three cubic yards.
I see. And, okay.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
What about Holmes with two carts? Will you be doubling up?
The, the second cart would be 695. They would pay 1095 for the first 95 gallon cart and the second cart would be 695. Currently, they pay 695 and then an additional $5, I'm sorry, not 250. They pay additional $5.
Okay, we're now going to take a five-minute break. This meeting is resuming.
We're starting.
All right. Does, does anyone have any more questions about the budget? Alderman Rainey.
Nice try.
Alderman Rainey.
Um, I'd like to go to the proposed budget. And online, it's page 11 I'm looking at. What the real number is, I have no idea. But I'm, I'm looking at revenues.
Is that the page Alderman Rainey on the screen?
11, oh. I can't.
Okay.
What does it show? Let's talk about the real estate transfer tax. Do you have, is, does that budget, does that sheet show a million six?
State transfer tax is line item 51, 620, and it has a, an estimate of 1.5 million for this year and next year, a $1.6 million projection.
Well, wait, wait, wait. What we projected last year was 3 million.
That was our budget in '09, '10.
And what we're, what you're projecting for this year is what?
1,505,000.
Right, that's, that's about what we're going to get, hopefully. So for the coming year, we're projecting 1.6 million.
Correct.
That, that probably makes sense. Let's talk about building permits. We heard Lehman Walker saying that building permits were going to be so far down that we don't need these employees. So I'm looking at our budget projection for next year. What, what are we projecting to actual, is the actual number for this year?
All permits for.
No, building permits.
Building permits only. We had a budget of 2.5 million.
Right.
A projection for this year of just over 1.5 million. And I'll stop.
Here's my point, here's my point. We're projecting actual receipt of building permits at one point, say it again, five?
Yes.
Yet, we're told that permits are going to be down next year, but we're projecting 2.2 million. Which to me, in my feeble mind, comes out to an increase of $700,000 in permits. Building permits only.
Building permits only. In '09, '10, we have a budgeted staffing complement of X and we had a budgeted revenue projection of that same amount, that we staff up to the amount of activity we feel we have. So over 2009, 2010, what the building permit revenues is telling us is something that you said earlier, is we should have made these changes earlier because our volume, even right now, is not sufficient to carry the number of, the, the amount of resources. I won't say personnel, the amount of resources devoted to permitting.
Marty, Marty, you're answering a question that wasn't asked. That, please, I, you're just.
My apologies.
Confusing me, let's keep it so simple. I'm concerned about the 2,200,000. I suspect that might be on target. I'm not arguing that it's too high or too low. Okay? But it doesn't track with what Mr. Walker said, that compared to this year, next year, building permits are going to be down. So is there something you all know that we don't know? Because this is exactly the opposite of that statement. Building permits are up compared to last year in terms of our projection.
And I would respectfully say that that's not the analysis. The analysis is that we anticipated 2.5 million and did not get 2.5 million. And we are not anticipating 2.5 million next year. We are looking at 2.2 million. And we staffed to 2.5 million, so we need to go down to 2.2 million or I would submit that it's the whole amount of permits where we're showing a $565,000 reduction and that's why we're looking at the reductions in that department.
All right. What I want to know is, not so, is there anybody here, uh, Lehman, you can address this. I need a community development person, maybe even a building permit person, to tell me, our experience this year was a million five. Did we have any major projects this year for which we issued building permits?
And Lehman did not, was not involved in, in the revenue projections. Dennis Marino and other members of those staff worked with the budget team to project these and I can't answer that question. The, we do not have, I don't believe, any major projects along the lines that we would see in the past where the permit was in excess of 300,000 or 400,000 dollars. We are now.
About last year? I mean, this current year?
Right.
2009, '10.
That's what I'm referring to, yes. That we did not have those.
Alderman Rainey, I could, I could only perhaps supplement that answer, right? Marty, just in terms of looking at the, what the trends have been over the past three or four years with the decline in, in permit activity. And as I said, I, I wasn't here at the time those projections were done. But in '06, '07, we had just over 3,500 permits issued. And the year following that, it was 3,200. Now for '09, '10, in terms of actuals, it's going to be less than 3,000. So there is still a continued decline in terms of the number of permits. I can't speak to the projections, the revenue projections, however.
But, I mean, I, I'm curious, I'd be curious to know what people in the building department are, are thinking about with this number. One of the things, one of the trends that you're seeing lately are renovations, which sometimes can be extremely costly. You know, like adding on a room or something as opposed to going out into the market and buying something bigger. So, I mean, and I, and I was looking at the, the target permit fees for this little project they've got going and it, I, I think it's over 100,000. So all I wanted to know is, are, are we projecting any large fees from Northwestern projects? I mean, they're usually good for a couple of hundred thousand. Or a couple of, and on a good year, a couple of millions.
Yes, actually, the 2.2 million includes a very large Northwestern project and we had a concern of whether or not it was going to come in literally right now or just in March. We're expecting that to start this year early on. So that, and they were not sure whether or not they would pull permits by February 28th or not, but it is a large project on the other side of a $300,000 permit fee. So there is a large project included in that 2.2 million dollars.
Alderman Rainey, can I just ask about the Mather, the second Mather building? Which, you know, the Georgian is being demolished right now. Do, do you project that that, that those permit fees will be coming in this year? I don't know what the.
It would make sense, but I do, I do know of the Northwestern specifically. I would want to research and get the actual numbers on the Mather. I apologize for not having that handy.
But Marty, you wouldn't be the one, I mean, you wouldn't be the one projecting this number. This number comes from community development, from their knowledge of what's in the pipeline or.
That is correct.
Right, right. So.
And.
I, I would imagine this number includes the Mather, Melissa. I would, I suspect it definitely does. All right.
Madam Mayor, Alderman Rainey, I, I think what we're, we're trying to do as we reconfigure the department is to use, make the best use of our resources as we can. And we are going to have the inspectors necessary to do this. If you look, we were a million dollars off of our projections this year. We, we expected 2, 2.5 million, we're looking at 1.5 million. We are going to have the staff necessary that are capable, qualified, and have the appropriate expertise to do this. We just think we have a staffing model that will save the City of Evanston money.
Well, we were a million and a half off real estate transfer tax.
And we could go down the long list.
A million and a half off of that and a million off of permits. So I, I just want to make sure that doesn't happen again.
And, and I think a key component, as, as many of you have spoke this morning, is that we have to watch many pieces of this budget extraordinarily carefully over the next 12 months. And we were, I am committed to come back to you on a quarterly basis and more often if needed, to make other adjustments if these numbers don't come in.
And one of the things, one of the, maybe we should have talked about these numbers first because Alderman Wilson, when you look at these numbers and you see last year how far off we were because we kept saying, you know, well, we'll fix it later, we'll fix it later. You can't fix it later if the money doesn't come in, you can't fix it later. So it, it's just so important to be more on target with revenue projections. It's easy to be on target with cuts because you say, this person makes 100,000 a year, we're eliminating them, that saves 100,000. But with, with projections, if, if you're not, if you're not conservative, you can get in a lot of trouble. So anyway, I'm, I guess the two, I mean, the 2,200,000 with the Northwestern project and the, and the Mather.
Alderman Nguyen.
I already asked my question.
All right, Alderman Wilson.
I'm just going to point out that I haven't been saying we should be fixing it later all along. I've been saying we should be, you know, building in a budget that has reserves at the, at the, at the inception, so, just so that's clear.
Okay, I see no lights. Alderman Rainey.
I can, are we moving on now to?
I, I think so.
I, I would like an explanation of the fleet cuts. I, you know, I've given my thought, I've not talked to any city employees about it, but one person who I do not know spoke a couple of weeks ago and mentioned a previous situation where we had massive cuts in fleet service and the effect that had on the operation of our city fleet. And I do remember that. I do remember garbage trucks down, I remember police cars down, I remember other vehicles down. And so if we could just have somebody talk to us about that.
Ready? Okay. The proposed cuts for, for fleet are a supervisor, as you know, auto service worker and a mechanic. Over the last two years, we have reduced our fleet and part of that reduction included some of the more difficult equipment to maintain. Garbage truck in the proposed budget, there's an elimination of the street sweeper. In all, it'll be about 15 to 20 pieces of equipment that will have been reduced. And that is of just over 300 pieces of equipment that we maintain overall. When we looked at basically how we do business and our fleet size, we did a comparative analysis of what other cities are doing and, and how much they attribute. Our numbers are well over, even in terms of one of the cities who has more equipment than we do. They have four fewer employees than we have maintaining our, the fleet. And while we don't think that the reduction of four was appropriate because we do have to have a few additional mechanics because our fleet is older. So we tried to accommodate for that in that regard, but we also cannot ignore the fact that we have reduced our fleet in size as well. So as a result, that really speaks directly to the elimination of the mechanic position. The elimination of the supervisor's position is we run two shifts. And once again, we're one of few cities that run a complete, separate and distinct, almost eight-hour shift, second shift of, of fleet maintenance. We also have a lead mechanic position that was hired that never performed in the role as a lead mechanic to, basically, the position was designed to run the afternoon shift, but that never occurred. So we consolidated our hours.
Wait, it never occurred because the person never came on board or?
No, the person is there. We, we still just kept a second supervisor.
Why did that happen?
I can't answer that. All of that occurred long before I came to work here.
How long have you been here?
Four years.
And so this has been going on for four years plus? I mean, we, we have somebody in a role that doesn't perform the job.
Well, no, they perform, they perform, because part of the lead mechanic's job is also to perform as a mechanic. So they do that and they fill in when the supervisor's not there. The, the.
But the pay for that job is for supervising?
Well, it's for leading though, the workers, because we have crew leaders. We do have two, we have a tiered process from a leader position to supervisor. It was just a duplication of effort that, that was eliminated. And that's where the supervisor cut was proposed. The auto service worker position, that position was designed to really do a lot of transporting and fairing of, of vehicles, back and forth to fleet and a lot of that responsibility. And a lot of that responsibility got absorbed by the operating departments, and, and the remainder of it would be absorbed by the, the, the operating departments that require the service, as opposed to fleet being the vehicle farrier.
So we will still have two shifts?
We will have, we're cutting the shift by four hours.
What are the hours of the second shift?
They overlap between the, the day shift, I believe it's from eleven to seven P.M., or seven-thirty P.M. And now they operate until eleven P.M. And I just wanted to point out, the only vehicles that are moving after five o'clock are, are the, are the, the police vehicles. Well, and even the fire, the fire mechanic only works during the day, so...
Even now?
Even now, yes.
But we don't normally repair fire trucks, anyway, do we?
Well, we do do some, minor things, yes.
Alderman Home, I'm sorry, Alderman Rainey, are you done?
Just remember that there, there were problems the last time we made cuts here. And I, you know, if there's a supervisor, if there's not a supervisor, then we have no business maintaining that position. But other mechanic types, it's a concern.
Alderman Holmes?
Ms. Ecclestone, in terms of, you said ferrying back and forth, so that means that if a police car breaks down, and they bring it, they, they would have to bring it into fleet, and then they'd have to come back and get it, rather than having a fleet service person go pick it up and bring it back, is that, and take it back? Is that what you're saying?
Well, like, if there's a problem with the police car and it's drivable, it's different than, like, a tow truck operation. The tow truck operation would still occur. That's not, that's not impacted.
I understand that part.
Yes, but if you have something that's wrong, even if it's just for preventative maintenance purposes, yes, the police officer would drop the car off, or whoever they, in the police department, would have assigned that responsibility to. It would be their responsibility to get the vehicle to fleet services.
Okay. How often has someone from fleet services had to go over and pick up police cars?
Well, I can't answer that, but I think it's probably a daily, because of the way the preventative maintenance schedule would, would run on those vehicles. It, I could see that at least once a day that a ferrying service may be needed.
Thank you.
But, but that doesn't, that, that's not a full-time job, a person who go, who does the valeting for that, right?
Well, the auto service worker position, the, the job description and the activities performed by the, the position, there's, it's a little bit of a disparity between what that position is supposed to do by the job description, and what actually it ends up doing by operational practice, I guess.
But they do other things in the course of the job.
Yes, yes, yes. They don't just sit after the, yes.
Waiting for the call.
Right, right, that's, yes, that's correct.
Okay. You're convinced, I, let's see how it works, I am convinced.
All right, I see no further lights, so I assume that we're done with that. Oh, Alderman Holmes?
Not on that, I'm ready for the next slide.
Alderman Holmes, go for it.
Okay. I, I would like to motion that we, below the, on below the line, that we restore the one other staff position that's there. And my reason for that is that I think that all of the below-the-line positions, and the only position that's left is forestry, I believe it's in the forestry department.
Holmes, it's two positions.
It's two positions in the forestry department. That, that all of those below-the-line positions were really options, and I, I would just think that we could find the money to replace those, so that those people could have their jobs back.
Second, but I have a question.
Alderman Rainey?
What I have in my column, and, oh, I, is seventy-five thousand in the forestry department left, or right?
It's a hundred thousand.
One, one hundred thousand.
It's a hundred thousand.
Oh, I have seventy-five.
It's two people.
All right. My, I still second it, okay.
All right.
And then could I ask another question? City manager, what, what is the current status without this change of the inoculation program? Has there been any impact at all on the inoculation program?
I'll ask Mr. Gainer to come in to answer that question.
But if you know yes, or no...
I, I don't, I believe the answer is that there has not been a significant impact.
Okay, so then that's all.
And that's correct, according to Mr. Gainer.
There's no inoculation impact here, at all. Okay, all right, all right.
All right. Alderman Tandem?
What, what was the, the two-position cut that are still remaining below the line? What, what effect would that have on the forestry department and their capabilities?
Members of the council and Madam Mayor, basically, it will delay planting, it will delay even further the tree trimming program, stump removal, pretty much everything that's being done. And we'll have to reprioritize, and that's where the delays will come in. We can only, for instance, in, do the elm injection program during a certain period of time. We can only do trimming of certain trees. We have to delay the elm and oak tree trimming to before June first and after September, approximately. We can get into some real specifics, and I could ask Mr. D'Agostino to do that, but everything goes on a, on a pretty much of a delay by having the two forestry workers' positions eliminated.
All right, it has been moved and seconded to restore the two positions. City clerk, could we have a roll?
Are these people who make fifty thousand a year apiece? Is that how this goes? See, these little people are...
That's correct.
And does that include their benefits?
If I may, Alderman, that was one of our original estimates, and we kept it in there. We did do a little research on that. So the number's a little bit light when you add in the benefits. So we, we never updated that number at the hundred thousand for the two, so it could be closer to the sixty-thousand-dollar level. But it would have been a cut added back in below the line, and now coming back out. So if you take it out, there's no net, net impact to your analysis.
No, it's just like Alderman Holmes says, is, you know, these are people...
Alderman Rainey, could you use your mic?
I'm sorry. These are people who, who work so hard and get so dirty doing what they're doing, that it, and it makes such a huge difference on the way the city looks. And if the city doesn't look good, then people aren't going to come here and spend their money and buy houses and, you know, you know, recreate here and do those kinds of things. So I really hope we can support this.
Alderman Fisk?
Marty, could you tell me where we're at with the, with our ending surplus number at this moment?
Before the vote.
Before the vote.
Before the vote. Do you leave the hundred thousand in?
Okay, Alderman Fisk?
I had one more question for Doug. Doug, with the, with the reduction of these two folks, how would that increase our tree trimming schedule? Would go from how many years to how many years?
Well, I think I had mentioned it previously, and it's sort of a guess, but at this point, the council had asked us to try to get down, and had provided additional funding and so on, to get us down to around a six or seven-year trimming cycle from about, I think it was around seventeen or eighteen years. We got it down to about seven, give or take, until the Emerald Ash Bore hit. And then because of the ordinances and the law by the state, we had to go and refocus. So we were up around eight to nine, and Paul has indicated twelve. He's being very conservative. I think we're going to be going more like, maybe between twelve and fourteen because of the Emerald Ash Bore and the other things that we're doing.
All right. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Winn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tandem?
No.
Alderman Grover?
No.
Five to four, the motion passes. I see no lights. Does anyone have a question?
Could you repeat the, the vote telling? Five to four. Five, five to, five ayes, four noes.
The four...
Do you want to...
Repeat who the vote is?
Oh, I'm sorry, sure. Just who the noes are?
Or the ayes and the noes.
Okay. Alderman Rainey, aye. Alderman Burris, no. Alderman Fisk, aye. Alderman Jean Baptiste, aye. Alderman Winn, aye. Alderman Wilson, nay. Alderman Holmes, aye. Alderman Tandem, no. Alderman Grover, no.
I'll have to have more caffeine if I'm counting wrong up here. Alderman Rainey?
Are we ready to move on?
Yes, we are.
I, I would like to revisit the discussion of the library. To point to a memo that we received from our corporation council regarding the expenditure of interest from the endowment from the library. I, when I read the memo, I, I issued a response to the library board. I think there's nobody on this council who did not hear me say that I would like the library board to consider spending an annual amount, the hundred-and-thirty-three thousand that city manager indicate would be this year's amount from the, the endowment.
Alderman Rainey, the mic's not picking you up here. Thank you.
On, the hundred-and-thirty-three thousand on the six months for the library branches that we, we agreed to keep open. The library issued a memo saying that there was no way they were going to support the maintenance and ongoing financing of the branch libraries. Nobody asked them to do that. I asked them to make a one-time expenditure, and I think, I think their response was a purposeful misunderstanding of what I asked for. Alderman Jean Baptiste asked the corporation council to tell us whether or not we had any rights over the spending of that endowment. And I think we probably got the correct answer in that, no, there is no right to the council to expend that money. However, I think the fact that the library board chose not to help out in this case, not even to make a token contribution, so that the private sources could generate some kind of fundraising campaign, sort of indicates what's important and what's not important to the library board. And whether or not that's what they meant, boy, oh, boy, that is exactly the message they sent to me. And so, what I would like to do is, I would like to ask those who supported our spending a hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, which, by the way, I think is short, because I don't think the hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand includes consideration of the maintenance of those libraries, which was a separate line item. I would like to ask those who voted in favor of the motion on the prevailing side, if there's anybody who would like to consider reconsideration. We are wasting a hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars. Also, we all received a letter from a former library employee, Mindy Wallace, who, who really laid it out for us. What, what do we mean? What do those of you mean, who voted to subsidize the branches for six months? What do you mean by that? Where's the money going to come from after that for, for ADA? What happens if, in the meantime, somebody files a complaint about the lack of ADA availability at the, at the South Branch Library? So I hope everybody read it. I thought it was an excellent letter, and she asked some excellent questions. And I spoke to a previous president of the library board, said, "Got to get rid of those branches. Got to do everything you can to enhance the main library." So I, I just think that if the library board is not willing to consider this important enough to finance for six months, or at least to make a contribution, that we, who are voting to support it with taxpayers' dollars, feels like we're committing a crime. It just feels like such a waste. So, having said that, I'm opposed to keeping the branch libraries open for six months.
Ald, I'm sorry, Alderman.
I think, I think we should close them if the board is not willing to support with some endowment funds.
Alderman Winn?
Well, I was disappointed with the library board's response as well, although I think I'm, I took a slightly different analysis of it. But I would like to hear if the, Mary Johns is here, if she has anything to share with us before we continue the discussion. I'll briefly say that when I read the library board's response, my interpretation of it was that they felt that they were not legally permitted to spend the money now on that. Now, that may have been incorrect, but from their standpoint, and maybe they misunderstood the situation. But I'd like to hear from Mary Johns.
Madam Mayor, council members, the board did have a significant discussion about the use of endowment funds, and their conclusion was that using endowment funds for operating costs was outside the parameters of, of the intent, of the, the endowment. And so that was the basis for their decision about not using endowment funds. That we do indeed use endowment funds to supplement a number of aspects of library operations, in the sense of collections and special projects in the past. In the last two years, actually, we have not used endowment funds because of the decline in, in interest on the, the endowment itself. So their, their feeling, from being at the meeting, was that, that the operations was an inappropriate use of, of the endowment funds.
Alderman Winn, are you done?
Yeah.
Alderman Bur...
Well, I'd like to, to say that I would still, the question, we had, my mind was determined to, to go, to give the libraries the, the additional six months, and let the task force, which is made up of the library board members, develop a solution to this before Alderman Rainey's very apt question to the board. My mind was made up by that already, and although I was hopeful, I was committed to that idea from the very beginning, from, from that point in the discussion. So I, I do think that we have indicated, and the task force from the library board has indicated their strong support of the branch libraries. There's a strong community organization, branch love, and I'm hearing from many more people in the community who, as always, it suddenly comes to their attention, and they want to know if there's any organization out there they can join. So, and I've been pointing people towards the, the task force and the other organizations. So my, my vote is unchanged. I want to give them the six months, and, and I think that, that we should give them that opportunity.
Alderman Burris?
All right, I have a, a bunch of questions and a few things that I'm going to read directly from the library board's letter to us. The first, actually, question, Mary Johns just said that they couldn't use the endowment for operating, but the endowment policy says, "It was the expressed intent of the board of trustees," I'm reading verbatim, sorry, "it was the expressed intent of the board of trustees that the endowment was established to supplement and enhance the library's collections, operations, and facilities, never to diminish in any way the funding for the library that is provided by federal, state, or local governments." There is nothing in that endowment provision that says they cannot use it for operating expenses. Once again, I deal with endowments regularly. I can't imagine how the board, the library board could interpret operations or facilities not to include the branch libraries. And I would like to refer to the, our legal department for an explanation on how the library board can say the endowment... department for an explanation on how the library board can say the endowment can't fund operations or facilities when it's clearly written in the endowment. That's number one question. Number two question is, how does the library board and, does the ad hoc task committee have a name now? I kept saying Branch Love, and then people would correct me and say, "That's not really the whole committee." So does this task force that is raising the funds for the six months, do they have a name? What is their relationship with the library board? I think there's some duplication. If there is an intertwined relationship between the library board and this ad hoc task committee, then I have questions about their letter. Specifically, I'm going to read two paragraphs, and I apologize for reading the whole paragraph, but if you don't read the whole paragraph, you can't get the context for emphasis.
Can you give us the date of the letter that you're reading?
Sir, it was in our, it's in our packet. Just a second. Let me pull up the exact date. February 18th. So the paragraph that starts "By its nature," "By its nature, an endowment fund aims to provide benefit over the long term. Typically, the principal in the fund remains intact to ensure that the fund can continue to support approved activities. In other words, the donor to an endowment is looking to benefit the institution and patrons long into the future or for a specific purpose. Allocating endowment monies to pay the short-term operating expenses of the libraries," and this is emphasis, "especially when viability of the branches has been questioned, contradicts this aim." Okay? So we want to be very clear that the library board is already saying in their letter that the viability is questionable. The next paragraph starts, that I'm going to read, starts "In short, in short, the endowment fund has a tradition of being a vehicle for excellence in library services to the benefit of all of Evanston's citizens. We believe that in the fund's intent, and that is our obligation as its stewards, the benefit of all Evanston residents." So are they saying, then they go on to say, "At the Board of Trustees meeting on February 17th, the board reaffirmed this policy with majority vote not to allocate the endowment funds to sustaining branch operations," going back to saying that the branches are not benefiting all of Evanston's residents, citizens. And maybe that is not what they meant. Maybe they really didn't mean to say that there wasn't viable. Could be wrong. Maybe their punctuation's off here. Maybe their intent is wrong. But I don't see how you can read those two paragraphs and say that the library board is in strong, has a strong commitment and support to keep the branches open. So those are comments. I would like some explanation on those regards. Thanks, and Grant, you have your hand up.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I believe I can address your first question with respect to the library board and its discretion to utilize the endowment funds. Of course, I was, I'm not privy to those discussions, and I can't necessarily interpret their endowment policy. However, I see nothing in the bylaws of the board that would prescribe them, that would prevent them from spending the endowment funds on short-term operating costs. To the extent that there may be some clarification or an interpretation issue relative to the comments both embodied in that letter and at the board meeting, that's probably clarification that can be best received from other sources. And I would defer to Ms. Johns with respect to the analysis and the answer of the other questions.
Again, I think the discussion circled around the notion of operations and that the idea of the long-term commitment being supplementing and not taking the operations as the focus of the use for the endowment. That the idea being that, yes, we would supplement or they would supplement the budget with endowment funds for collection, which has been done in the past, and those are collections that benefit everyone, but it is not the day-to-day operations, as was interpreted in the discussion.
But the endowment policy clearly says operations and facilities. So the board is deciding that they only want to use it for collections, but that is not what the endowment policy indicates. So it actually reverts back to what the endowment policy says they can use the money for.
And I think part of the discussion also in relation to that was that it was the idea of the enhancing and not diminishing the, in other words, replacing the funding from the city or other federal and state resources with the endowment funds. So that the basic premise for the funding of the library was the governing body, and that the endowment funds were to enhance that. And I don't know if we have a board member here or not.
Alderman Burris, are you done?
Well, there's, I would like to answer the other questions that I had from the memo that clearly indicates that they don't, the library board, what is the relationship between the library board and the ad hoc task force in funding? And the two paragraphs that I read that clearly state, in my opinion, and others may read it differently, that the library board doesn't believe that the branches are viable and that they're not benefiting all of Evanston's citizens. I just want a clarification.
The second part of your question, I can't speak for the board in how they feel about whether they are contributing to the community and every, all citizens, other than the fact that the board previously did make the statement that they were in support of the branch libraries. In terms of the task force, the task force was formed by the library board, and it's called the Task Force on Sustainable Funding for Evanston Public Library, meaning the entire gamut of services throughout the community. That task force is made up of, currently, two members from the board, and I believe there are four or five citizens on the board, and they are associated with Branch Love. And there are also efforts to increase the size of that task force for greater representation throughout the community. And they are looking then at other ways of identifying funding sources and the fundraising, the private fundraising, looking for grant kinds of opportunities. And so they're obviously just beginning those processes, but they are looking for a number of ways to find alternate funding.
I'm sorry. It's all of it's so contradictory that that's where my frustration is, is that I just want, you have the library board that's on this task force but saying that it's not viable, and then, so if they're convinced they're going to raise the funds they need, why don't they use the endowment funds to help support the branches over the six months? And then after the six months, when they've raised the funds, they can replenish the endowment for that exact amount that they've used out of the endowment. If this task force and the library board are, you said, strongly supporting the branches, then if they're raising the funds, it's just basically they're using it from one pot, and they're convinced they're going to get the money in six months, so they can then replenish that pot. And I know that you didn't write the memo, and I know that I'm just asking the question because it's, there's just so much contradiction in the letter and the, how we're getting response from the library board, if they're part of the task force, if they're intertwined, but they're not, in their letter, they're not saying that they're viable. It's very confusing for me.
And I am actually not in a position to answer that because I don't know that piece.
I don't think Mary's the right person to answer that. Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Yeah, I think you are in a position to answer that. You staff the board, right? The meeting?
I attend the meeting.
You staff the meetings?
Well, I'm there. I don't set the agenda. I don't tell them what to say.
You participate in the discussion.
And mostly, I don't participate in the discussion.
You say you can't, you can't, you can't-
Because I don't know what they were thinking. You know, I can't speak to everyone's line of reasoning, other than what I've explained that-
You indicated that, according to your interpretation, the board interprets the use of the endowment to be used to supplement on the city's contribution and not necessarily to replace the city's contribution, right? So does that mean that if we decide to contribute $5, then the board, in your interpretation, can then, you know, supplement with the additional funds that's needed?
And again, I wouldn't speak for the board on that piece.
And the board, no members of the board is here today?
There was a member earlier. I'm not sure that she is still here.
Is there a member of the board here? Apparently not.
I can add-
Let me just say this. If you can't speak for the board, then, you know, let me ask the city attorney a couple of questions. Well, before I do that, what's the mechanics? If the board decided to allocate money, what happens? How does that money get spent? You know, they make a decision, then who writes the checks?
The city does.
The city does. So the funds are in the city's-
Because the funds are in a separate library fund account.
Marty, you-
So we would, and we would identify the invoice as being something that was being paid for with endowment funds.
Correct. With the proper approval, we would, the endowment fund is a part of the whole city fund structure, and we'd be able to move the funds accordingly.
And for your proper approval is the approval of the board? You don't know?
For me, the proper approval would be the results of this, and I'm not trying to be evasive, what, how we decide here, and also the results of the actual dispersment in the past. Has it always been a library motion, library board motion to approve dispersal? So I would, when it comes to that, I will look to the gentleman to my left.
Gentleman to your left, then.
With respect to your question, Alderman, the-
First, if you could start from some history, if you know. You know, how do we, how have we allocated the funds and-
Let me try, because I think we're making this more complicated than it needs to be. The library board, from time to time, has brought opportunities to supplement funding for the library. Those are generally one-off type purchases. Either books, they help with the teen room renovation. That is brought to the board. The board approves that. Then, because the fund is a part of our overall fund structure, an invoice is paid from that, generally with Mary's approval, based with the concurrence of the library board. So it's not something that is budgeted by this council. The money is in the fund structure of the city and is spent, and at least the past practice has been on a one-off basis on specific issues. The invoice comes in, we pay the invoice.
So then, city attorney, what, could you explain your memo? I'm trying to understand why we have absolutely no discretion.
Well, I just consider the issue relative to the endowment. Now, the problem with trying to fully analyze this issue is it involves two related concepts. Obviously, the Illinois Library Act, which has certain issues and duties that it discusses relative to the library board and what they do. Then you have the separate concept of home rule in Evanston, and the city council being the entity that directs the general fund levies for purposes of funding the library. Now, obviously, with respect to the historical background and how the libraries have been funded, it's my understanding that those monies have been allocated out of the general fund. With respect to, just strictly speaking, the endowment issue, which we were asked to analyze yesterday, I see nothing that would legislatively permit the city council to prescribe, to mandate a specific manner and way those endowment funds are spent, because under the Illinois Library Act, one of the powers that is reposed in a library board of trustees is to invest funds pursuant to the Public Funds Investment Act, and that would necessarily implicate an endowment. But that also ties back to the other issue about how the endowment is spent. That's a determination that I believe would be reposed with the library board, and I see nothing in that that would prevent them from utilizing those funds to fund operations if they so desired to do so.
Okay, but in terms of, under the home rule, the city of Evanston, city council cannot direct and suggest how this fund is utilized?
Well, as I outlined in my memo, Alderman, I think that I certainly would want to consult some of the case law, which I certainly have not had the opportunity to do so due to the time constraints. This memo really was devoted to interpreting the applicable statute that spoke to trustees, the endowment, and the way that the endowment could be utilized. The issues of home rule, I think that that's a very key consideration. Based upon some of the cases that I was able to take a look at this morning, there is a very strong suggestion that home rule could be implicated with respect to a levy. However, I think a levy issue is separate and distinct from an endowment issue. The endowment is, to my understanding, sources funds from donors. Those donors contribute to the endowment fund. Those funds are solicited by an investment committee that is, I believe, composed of library board trustees. So it's my understanding and opinion on this issue with, obviously, there's certainly other ways that we could analyze this and look at it further. It's my position that at this point, the endowment would be the first, the endowment control, the first port of call would be the library board of trustees. There may be a home rule issue implicated in that. However, I see nothing based upon the statute and the cases that I've reviewed to this point that leads me to conclude that home rule would trump, would trump the endowment, the control of the endowment. And that, again, Alderman, I'm strictly speaking and limiting that opinion relative to the endowment and nothing else.
So it's not determinative either way at this point?
Well, I believe, I believe, to the extent that I've reviewed the Illinois Library Act and can find that there's specific authority in that act that speaks to the use of the endowment, I believe it is determinative. My opinion is determinative, strictly speaking, to the endowment. However, obviously, with Illinois case law being such as it is in construing different parts of both the Illinois Library Act and home rule, as a good attorney and as the attorney for the city, I would want to do my due diligence and do further research on it. However, at this point, based upon just the statutory interpretation, the reading of the statute, which is always the first port of call that any court would make, I see nothing under the statute that would permit the city to direct the use of endowment funds.
Alderman Jean Baptiste, are you done? All right. Then Alderman Grover, then Alderman Rainey. I've got you down, Anne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was, as you were, disappointed to learn of the Board of Trustees' decision with regard to the interest on the endowment. But I think that our decision to fund the libraries for six months was not predicated upon finding funding from the endowment or the interest income. In fact, at that point, I think it was a big question mark. I'm glad to know that there has been a contribution of $25,000, I believe, from perhaps the Friends of the Library. Director Johns, if you could-
Thank you. We actually have a donor who had given a significant amount of money for branch renovations. And so we have talked with that donor, and there is agreement to, and the board accepted that offer, to transfer $25,000 from the Friends, what was the Friends Fund. When the Friends disbanded, their monies were transferred to the Library Gift Fund, where they have been held since then. And so $25,000 of that original donor's gift to the branch renovation can be allocated for branch support. So that would be an additional piece, and they would continue to look for those kinds of opportunities.
So, as I said, the decision to fund the libraries was not predicated upon any decision from the Board of Trustees, except for the library trustees' affirmation of the importance of branch libraries. And we start then with $25,000 in a task force that also was not counting upon any spinoff of the endowment income to fund the libraries beyond. In fact, the task force's mission is to find any kind of long-term viable funding solutions, and it's a wide range of options and doesn't depend upon money that we already know about and have. And as we already know, there are significant pledges of funding towards that amount, and a considerable amount of talent and time that has already been expended towards the idea of some long-term viable funding for branch libraries. So while I am disappointed in the Board of Trustees' recommendation and decision, I don't think it suggests that the branch libraries are not viable. The viability of the branches has been questioned, certainly by all of us, but I don't think we've yet determined that they are not viable. The task force will make them viable or not. The task force will make them viable or not. And the six months was to give the task force time to do that.
Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The task force met prior to the time the library board met. And after the time when the council reversed its vote to support the branches for six months at $168,000, was the issue of the endowment raised at the task force meeting? And if so, what was the response of the task force? And do you attend those meetings, Mary?
I have attended one meeting.
Was there only one meeting of the task force?
I think the task force has met twice, but I would not swear to that. I was at a meeting a week ago, and there was discussion about the endowment. And the members of the task force were supportive of the board's position on not using the endowment-
But the board didn't have a position then? The board, didn't the board meet after?
Right, but the discussion was the same at the task force meeting, that the endowment was, was not an appropriate vehicle.
See, in the, in the letter from Karen Terry, it, the last sentence on the first page says, you know, "At the board of trustees' meeting on February 17, the board reaffirmed the policy with a majority vote not to allocate endowment funds to sustaining branch operations." I mean, they are, they're clearly not interested in doing that. When the endowment issue, you know, that we didn't think about the endowment at the time, I, I think there are plenty of people around who didn't know about the endowment. So I don't think we all said to ourselves, "Oh, the endowment money, let's not even consider that and just allocate taxpayers' money." So while it might have been in the back of our heads, it wasn't up in the forefront, and it really wasn't a topic of discussion. When I was considering the endowment, I looked at the comprehensive annual financial report, and I did see in excess of $700,000 recorded as an expenditure in that fund in the last year. And I'm wondering, Mary, if you can share with us what that was? And at one time, I asked the question and never really got the answer. Was that the teen center? Was that the children's center? What was that expenditure? And was it from the endowment?
Actually, I will ask for Paul Gotchak to come out with the financials that he has tracking the funds, because in the two years that I've been here, we've actually not used endowment funds. So-
In the latest comprehensive annual financial report, there is an accounting of an excess of $700,000, not as a revenue, but as an expenditure. And, but I have no idea what it was.
Paul will be able to tell you that.
And I don't know if it was from the endowment or a special gift or what.
Alderman Rainey, there was not use of endowment money in last fiscal year because of the market loss in the endowment, so to preserve the principal and the total value of the assets. I'll need to actually look at that. The, the last major expenditure from the endowment was a transfer to support the youth services renovation project. So the board had allocated money over three years to help fund the project for the teen loft and also the children's room renovation.
I think it was a total of all that money. That's what I think. It wasn't a last-year expenditure, because it was the comprehensive financial report that ended February 2008. So it was from 2007. That was the last report. But that's what that money was. Now, one of the things that Mary said-
Alderman Rainey, if I can just add, I, I believe you and I had a conversation about this a couple of weeks ago. Steve Drazner, who I think is off busy researching another question that's come up here this morning. I spoke with him, and at least a portion of that was investment income loss in the, in the CAFR.
You, you didn't tell me that. I, I remember having the conversation that maybe it was the teen center, probably was the children's center, but I never heard it was investment loss.
Okay, and, and we can get you more specific.
That would be really important, yeah.
And Mr. Lyons is working on that, but, and I apologize if I'm imagining the con- maybe I had the conversation with Steve and then intended to have the conversation with you.
Right, because we did talk about the two issues, but not the third one.
Absolutely.
But the, the current balance in that account, the cash, is what? Paul, do you know that? Because this is a 2000, you know, really a 2007.
The current money in the endowment?
Yeah.
It's about $2.6 million.
Two point, well, that's more than what the CAFR showed. So it's, we, we made some money this past year, I guess. Little. All right, Mary, when, when that money is spent, you said that you don't tell the board what to do. When, when there's a project like the, the teen center or the children's center or some major project that needs doing, don't you, don't, I mean, aren't you like the city manager at the library? Don't you recommend to the board that they make expenditures from the endowment?
With the endowment fund, those, those purchases or expenditures would have been approved by the board.
No, no, but I mean, as the, as the library director, you, you give leadership to the board. They, they don't just run everything. Don't you, don't you provide recommendations to them that they then respond to? Just like we do to the city manager?
Right, in terms of, of those funds. And, and if what you're referring to is this use of the, the endowment funds, that came as a question, not a request from us.
But if you had, if you had to recommend, forget the endowment fund. If you had to recommend to the board, library board, whether or not they should either begin a fundraising effort or consider, let's say there, there was no question that the endowment fund could assist in this way, would you recommend that they support the ongoing operation of the branches?
That would be a, that would be a discussion that we would certainly take to the board and, and ask if that were an option for them to consider.
But as the director of the library, would you, would you say, number one? I'll, I'll give you three choices. Number one, I have no opinion about the ongoing sustaining of the branch libraries. Number two, I recommend the ongoing operation of the branch libraries. Or number three, I recommend that we cease operating the branch libraries.
Six months, do you want to put that in?
Yeah, well- For six months so that the money can, that's what I'm talking. Six months so that the money can be generated by private sources. Which of those three? I, I really want to hear the answer, Melissa. So let her answer it.
In the, in the preparation of the budget, we would look to the city funding, because that is our basis of funding. And that endowment funds would not be our first choice or suggestion. And I can't tell you at this moment that that would be a recommendation that I would take to the board without having a lot of other discussions and, and looking at, at resources and, and managing from, from the angle of the governing body that, that is responsible for providing the basic services of, of library to the community.
And ultimately, Mary works for me, and I work for the, the nine and 10 of you. So that would not be an appropriate discussion for her to have with the library board. We've prepared a budget. I, I think, you know, asking Mary which, you know, you want to close branches, you want to close main, they're all important. And these are difficult decisions, but she would not be having these discussions directly with the library board. They are an advisory body appointed by the mayor, and I think these are, again, these are very difficult decisions.
Well, that, that's what I always thought, but I've heard today that they are the end-all be-all of library operations, so I don't know.
Alderman-
It's just, it just would be good to have something that's agree-
Did the library branches continue or shouldn't they? And nobody's, you know-
Alderman Rainey, I have other Aldermen I have to call. Alderman Wilson, and then Alderman Wynn.
Thank you. I'm going to preface my comments with the fact that I don't intend to change my vote, but I, personally, I agree with the library board's memo, and I don't find it contradictory. And I'm, I'm not surprised by the memo. The council's support for the existence of the libraries is questionable. We've been back and forth several times at this point already. So I don't think that any reasonable person couldn't consider the viability to be questionable. I stand by my original position, and that's that we don't have the funds to keep the branches open right now. But philosophically, I don't think that a, that a component of the library system should have to fund, should have to fend for itself. I also don't think that we should try to assume control of the endowment by, by inferring that we're going to withhold, withhold funding. You know, it's, it's virtually like bullying them into, into dipping into this money, that I think it's pretty clear that that wasn't the intended purpose when these people made these donations to the library. I don't think that we've done that, but I want to make certain that we don't do that. And I also believe that the libraries are a system. I expect the libraries to develop and to coordinate a plan for services that meet the needs of the entire community, not just one component of the community. If we, if we're going to open a new facility, are we going to require that facility to be privately funded? I don't think that that's appropriate either. So whether they remain open or closed, my expectation is that a global plan should be developed. And unfortunately, given the context, this year, we don't have the resources to keep them open for, for this current year, so.
Alderman Wynn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I, I do want to say again what I said earlier about the fact that we did make this decision before we had thought of the endowment. I actually had not thought of the endowment in my, in, in my thought processes about this. I actually assumed that probably in the endowment, all the money in it was tagged for something, as frequently people do, you know, when they give money to an endowment, that they want it used for specific purposes. But I do think that, just to touch on some of the issues that we went through before, the economic generate, the economic engine that the North Branch serves to the Central Street businesses is really critical. And I don't want to close that North Branch and damage those businesses during the next six months. I'd like to give the libraries the six months that, that the supporters have said that they would like to have, and have the task force, which has already had two meetings, continue to work. We're hearing that members of the community who had already given large gifts to the library are redirecting their gifts to the branches. This is just the beginning. Let us give them the six months. And as a completely tangential issue, let's not damage the businesses on Central Street as a corollary effect of this. So I hope that the five members of the council who supported the six months continue their support. And despite what the analysis is of using the endowment interest funds from the library board, the library board has, has committed to working to keep these branches open. And I don't think that that's necessarily in conflict with what their view is on what, how they can use the endowment. So I would urge my colleagues who have continued to support it before to support it again.
Alderman Burris?
Actually, Mary, this is a question for you that possibly you can answer. I want to go back to your comment about, and this is a, a small amount of money, but this may come into play with this, the fundraising issue. So you talked about the $25,000 gift transfer from, that went to the library board fund, and then somebody said, "I want to take that $25,000 and transfer it to, I guess, this new entity and earmark it for branch renovations." Is that correct?
The money was given initially through the Friends of the Library for branch renovations. When the Friends disbanded, those funds were transferred to the library's gift fund with the same stipulations, and the donor has indicated that they would be willing to transfer some of that fund, redirect that, which-
Okay, so it's not a gift then?
Right.
It's not a gift, it's a grant with restrictions. So that's, because if you, there's restrictions, it is not a gift by IRS regulations. So it is not a gift, it's a grant. Just to be clear on that point. And I'd like to see the language on that gift. Who signed that gift agreement? If it was the library board that signed it, that's kind of suspect that the library board can sign a grant, once again, not a gift, that it makes a third-party entity responsible for something. Because the library board does not have any jurisdiction over branch renovations. That would need to come to this council. So if they signed a grant agreement saying, "We'll take this $25,000 and earmark it for branch renovations," without coming to us to say, "Is the city willing to do branch renovations?" They are in violation.
At that time, the city was willing to do branch renovations, and the city council had so stated.
Okay, but at this, did the city council then sign off on that gift agreement? And if the transfer of that gift agreement now, or the transfer of that grant, once again, is, has restrictions. I just think you should look at that also when new grants or gifts come in. If a gift comes, comes in to this new entity, it needs to be completely unrestricted dollars. It cannot be earmarked or designated. It's probably something that the city attorney should get to all of us to explain the difference between a gift and a grant. Thank you.
Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Grant, sorry, did you want to?
Oh, sorry.
I shall get that, I shall analyze that issue and report.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I agree, I mean, certainly agree with Alderman Wynn's analysis of the North Branch. And I think it's also, it's also fair to say that it's a social gathering place, too. The entire Central Street experience, I think, evolves around a number of things. Access to mass transit, the shops, and the library. It's, it's, as I had said once in an earlier meeting, the amount of money spent in six months on the, on the North Branch alone would not purchase a lot of economic development for that area. It's the economic development piece that we're, that we may, I mean, that's so important to keeping that area open. And I don't think we would get much for $80,000 or roughly half of what it takes to keep the, the branch open. With regard to the South Branch, the use is up 40% in this past year. It seems odd that we would question or even take away something that's getting such increased use from people who depend on public access to the internet for job searches, for, maybe just perhaps having email address access. You know, not everyone has that access. And I think we've seen that in the use of the computers and other things, you know, technical information. And finally, I think the, the enthusiasm that the branch love, or whatever you want to call it, I've never seen anything like the enthusiasm of this organization. I think it would be a real slap in the face to anyone who would like to create a sort of grassroots movement or get behind a cause that they feel so passionate about. I think they have earned, I think they have earned the six-month test, and I think that they will succeed. So I think it's very important that we stick with that agreement and, and, you know, just, you know, encourage and, and foster that, that thinking as much as we can.
Alderman Holmes?
My question is, what's going to happen after the six months? I know that there's renovation proposed, I believe, for both branches, and the whole issue of ADA off of the, particularly for the South Branch. And I, I'm just real concerned about that, because if, just let's say they raised $168,000 between now and, well, six months from now, what happens then? What happens with the renovation? What happens with the ADA? Because we, we don't have money for that, so what? I mean, I, I just don't like to set people up, and I support the branches. I really, you know, I think, I wish we had, I wish I had one in my community, but we don't. And I, you know, and I, I just don't want to see people with all the enthusiasm and the passion working for this, and then in six months, you know, we're right back here. There's not the money to do all the things that need to be done. And I think, to me, that's a real disservice to the citizens. And so, you know, yeah, we can vote to keep it for six months, but what's going to happen after that? And I think that we have to really think about that, that we have a responsibility as a council to look beyond making people feel good. And it's a feel-good piece of saying, "We're going to do it for six months, and we don't have a plan." I have not, Alderman Burris said it to us two meetings ago, "What is the plan?" And I haven't seen it yet. So that's where I am with this. If we knew what was, you know, certainly, I don't think anybody can magically say, "Well, it's going to be blah, 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 blah." But there ought to be some kind of framework of what's going to happen after six months. And I just don't want to set people up, so that's where I am. And I, I certainly, we can afford it, we do not have the money, and so my vote remains no.
Alderman Shaw-Baptiste?
First of all, I don't think that Alderman Wilson-
First of all, I don't think that Alderman Wilson talked about whether or not, or suggests that it is the board's responsibility to put forth a global plan for the libraries. And I don't think they've ever had a global plan as to how to serve everybody in the city. We've been around the block on this discussion many times. Realistically, I think that the sentiment of the council is that we would like to see everybody served, but the director should find some creative ways to make that happen without increasing the budget overall. I think that's our basic position. Now, having said that, I think that the six-months proposal is the compromise. We have said we will not fund the branch libraries on an ongoing basis. There were some discussions and proposals to try to reduce the funding to a six-month period for $168,000. That's my understanding. It is no more than that, it is no less than that. And beyond that point, I think the city stops funding. So it is a responsibility of the library board, the task force, branch love, or whatever the new name may be, and probably the various aldermen in those wards, to find a way, if they want to keep the branch libraries open. My position is still to support this six-month worth of funding, and that is it. I don't know what the new plan may be. I don't know what they would do after six months, but I know that this is the only commitment that I'm willing to make. And I think that, you know, the director of the library, the library board, and the city manager have to take some weight in terms of how we approach this particular question. It is, to me, hypocritical for the board to stand up and say they support the branch library, they support the task force, some members of the task force are on the board, and yet, you know, refuse to allocate funds to support the branches. I mean, that's a problem. And I'm not, you know, I wouldn't take a position that's punitive to the branch libraries because of that behavior. But I think that behavior is hypocritical, hiding behind the notion that it should not invest money in operations, and promoting as if Alderman Rainey's request was to talk about operations ad infinitum. That was not the question, it was for the six months. So I think that, you know, I have a problem going forward, and I want to look at that question that we raised, whether or not Home Rule trumps the authority of the Board of Trustees. And when you come back with the question, I may be willing to put a motion in to have the additional funding that we may allocate going forward today to come from the endowment. Because I think that's the purpose of that kind of money, to fund the library services, to offset where we need to offset, to supplement, to do whatever is necessary to make sure that we extend library services. The viability is questioned because we don't have money. If we had money, library services is a good thing, to have branches all over the place. We don't have the money, that's why the issue is being debated so vigorously, that's why we're questioning it. And I think that those who are in, who live and use the South Branch and the North Branch understand that we don't have the funds to keep funding this ad infinitum. That's why they're taking the initiative to go ahead and try to raise funds. And I would wish them good luck, but it's going to be hard to do that, to sustain that. But I would say that beyond the six months, you know, our funding ceases.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alderman Jean Baptiste, I agree with you. I think we've been very clear, especially at the last meeting, where we said that at the end of the six months, the library task force has to come up with a permanent, sustainable funding plan for the libraries. And Alderman Holmes, to my thinking, that includes any kind of improvements, including ADA accessibility in the bathrooms and the rest of the facility. At the end of six months, I am prepared to close the libraries. So again, the charge is both sincere and serious. I do think that, like Alderman Jean Baptiste mentioned, I think we need to have a clearer understanding of what the library board's approach is going to be to the entire library system. And I do want that additional information from the legal department on the use of the endowment.
Alderman Rainey.
Alderman Fisk, I think I heard that speech a while back when you voted not to keep them open. Here's what the plan is, for those of you who are wondering what the plan is. The plan is that we charge our taxpayers $168,000 to keep the branches open for four days, out of seven, at reduced hours. And then, in six months, the supporters of the branch libraries come to us and say, "Look, we've got pledges for X amount," which is going to be far short of $168,000, which, you know, is really not what it costs to keep the branches open. The branches cost about $465,000 a year to keep them open. That includes cleaning them. That is an important part of the branches, to have them clean. If they're so heavily used, they need to be cleaned. And we then say, "Oh, look, look, it's six months, but look, they've got pledges of $70,000. That's really good. Let's subsidize them again for another $100,000 for the rest of the year." And this goes on. I guarantee you that's going to happen. There's no accounting for how rent is going to be paid at the North Branch Library. The $465,000 doesn't include that. What about the rent on the South Branch Library? Are they going to be able to raise that? I see this as a patronizing effort on our part to sustain the excitement and exuberance of the branch, the people who, branch love people. This isn't going to happen, they're not going to raise $465,000 a year to keep these branches open. And if people on this council are telling the truth, or if their word means anything, you're not going to support it. But I don't believe that. I don't think you're going to be able to politically retain that position. I don't think so. Maybe Alderman Jean Baptiste, he's said it enough times, maybe he will. But I don't believe the rest will. So I just think it's such a huge waste of money. And, you know, we're talking like it's a huge waste of money that we have in this pot here. We don't have this money. We are now going to go out and levy against the taxpayers this $168,000, when most of them don't ever go to a branch library. Never. But we're going to levy it against them. And, you know, many of our residents aren't doing that well, but that's okay. I just want those of you who are supporting this to think, if one of our affordable housing groups came to us right now and said, "I want $168,000 to keep this project going," we would be asking for pro formas, we would be asking for all sorts of goals and objectives. I would hope we would, because that's what we would do to anybody, because that's the responsible thing. What do we have from the branch supporters? Nothing, nothing. Except they come up here with little signs and, you know, they promise to keep things going. We have both the task force and the library board saying, "We're not voting any money to sustain." The library is the only place where there's money. There's $2.6 million there, you all, 2.6 million. I don't care how bad times are, there's a decent interest generated from that amount of money. And I don't even want to have control of the endowment. I don't want to have control. I disagree completely with Alderman Jean Baptiste. But I think the library board ought to step up to the plate and vote to support the branches for six months. That's what I think.
Alderman Tandem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, with regard to Alderman Rainey's question about usage, I mean, if you follow that logic to the end, I mean, we really wouldn't have a library system. A minority of Evanston citizens use and have, carry library cards. I think a library system is very, very important to a community. I think a library system does include branches. I think it does serve all the community. And also, saying that this is wasted money, I mean, the branches will be open and will get used. The springtime and summer are the heaviest-used period, I know, in the North Branch, and it's not a waste of money. People will be using them for good reasons. Do you have questions about sustaining it? You know, that's the big question. It's a decent one, it's the biggest question I could ask. One of the things that Alderman Holmes mentioned was the liability of ADA access. I think the answer to that with regard to the South Branch is that we will be moving, it probably will be moving to a place that, you know, will either have that or will be a requirement of our lease signing. So I think that's not exactly a bargaining point, it will be a bargaining point for us. Thank you.
Could you elaborate on that? Where are we moving to?
It's a proposal that we move to a different space and closer to the Main Street Business District.
When? When are we going to do that?
Our lease is up in five months, six months? We have a five-month write-out.
And then, are we looking right now for another schedule? I'd like to know more about that. Because I have some other ideas about locations.
Alderman, it is 1:10 already, and we're back on the libraries as usual.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Holmes is next, but you're after her, Alderman Wynn.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to ask the city manager if we could, I want to understand what the responsibilities would be from the city after these six months. We own the North Branch, and so would we be responsible then, as a landlord, to be responsible for any kind of renovations, or any kind of ADA, or anything else there? Because then that's more money back in the budget. And if we're going to move on the South Branch, then I'm not going to even touch that if there's a proposal to move that, so that would take that away. But I would really like to know what our responsibilities would be as a council for, if they are able to raise some money, and for the North Branch, what would our responsibilities as a landlord, I'm assuming they're going to stay in that building, what would be our responsibilities for upkeep and maintenance of that building?
Alderman Holmes, members of the council. My understanding is that this is, that the fundraising that is being done is to supplant tax dollars for the operation of the library. It is not changing the operation of the Evanston Public Library. So the branches, if the council determines after six months that they will continue to remain open, the city is responsible for their operations, they're responsible for the maintenance of any facilities, just as we are in any of our parks' facilities, this building. So my understanding is, is not being proposed that this would be a separate entity, merely that outside entities would be raising money to supplant tax dollars.
So then, therefore, then, we're really not talking about $168,000 here? I mean-
I totally have misunderstood that.
Well, we're not talking about $168,000, that's what I've been trying to get you all to hear.
And I believe the council has not set any specific parameter as to what constitutes continuing the libraries after six months. My understanding is the motion has been to provide funding, to continue operations as is for six months, and there has been not any additional direction beyond that.
Absolutely. And so therefore, we're not talking, just so you clearly understand, that we're talking about much more. We're talking about if they are able to raise $168,000, the six months, and we're looking back to the city to support the branch libraries. I mean, it's as simple as that.
Where did we ever say they had to raise $168,000?
I thought it was four, I always thought it was the whole amount, the 486.
No, no, but, so Alderman Fisk, you must want to make a motion, because you just said that as of a certain date, you're not going to-
They should be sustaining.
In six months, you're closing them.
Alderman Wynn.
I'll defer to Alderman.
All right, Alderman Fisk.
No, I just wanted to make a quick comment, that my understanding, and I don't think I'm wrong about this, is that the agreement that, I'm assuming we have a lease with the library for the use of that building that the city owns?
The library is us. So we have a lease for the South Branch, the North Branch we own.
Right, okay.
And that lease is up in five months' time, or we have the ability to get out in five months.
When do we notice them?
I'm going to do it tomorrow.
March 1st.
Soon as there's final action on the budget, we will notice them.
Okay, I'm going to defer to Alderman Wynn. I'd like to make a motion, and I know now we're not in a pretend meeting, that we move to keep the North and South Branch libraries open. And I believe the amount necessary, we figured out at the last meeting, was $168,000 for six months.
That's already been done.
Yeah.
Wait.
That's it. It's been done.
All right, fine, okay.
Was that a straw vote? Or a real vote?
Keep it as is.
That was, I believe, made before in a straw vote in one of our, as Alderman Rainey says, in a make-believe meeting. So your motion is completely appropriate and was seconded.
It was seconded.
Did you want to say anything about-
Nothing.
Any criteria or what will happen at the end of six-
I would just like to call the question, because it is 1:15.
I agree with you. City Clerk.
No, I know we have discussion.
All right.
I think-
You just made a motion.
No, I know, I know that.
I'd like to call a question.
Thank you.
Then I want a roll call and calling the question, because I don't want the question.
All right.
Is there a second to calling a question?
There was.
That eliminates all discussion.
We just had discussion.
But there's a lack of clarity on the $168,000.
The question has been called, it's my understanding, Grant, that it's been called and seconded, so it precludes-
Calling the question, calling the question is on the floor, preparatory to a vote on Alderman Wynn's motion. So calling the question, there must be a roll call on that right now.
Debateable or?
Calling the question, yes, it is.
I'd like to debate.
All right, Alderman Rainey.
I think to make that motion and just leave it so blank without adding anything to it, I mean, it just makes no sense. What about in the six-month, one day? I mean, do you not feel obligated to make some reference in your motion to going forward beyond six months? And why wouldn't you just make it for, well, I mean, it doesn't explain anything.
All right.
I hope I will add clarity.
I said for six months, I meant six months. At six months and one day, then the libraries close. If the branch supporters cannot, and the task force cannot, develop a sustainable funding system for the branch libraries? Because clearly, there is not support from enough members of this council to continue to keep the branches open, okay? I'm not saying that I would not continue to vote for the branches, but I clearly, I will make that as my motion. And with respect to the ADA issues, my word, the South Branches had that ADA issue on the table and in our capital improvement plan for 10 years. I mean, we're not about to fix them this year. If we were about to fix them, we would have fixed them seven or eight years ago, you know? And if somebody comes after us on that, shame on them, you know? We have plenty of other buildings in Evanston that you can come after us on, okay? So does that provide enough clarity?
That's, sort of.
Then vote no, Alderman Burris.
All right, Alderman Burris, did you want to depay calling the question?
Yeah, I just need a definition of Alderman Wynn's. She amended it to be that they would be sustaining. Sustaining is not measurable. That doesn't, there's no definition of sustaining. What does sustaining mean, six months and one day? Is sustaining- Is sustain, 186,000 is not...
You mean funding operating?
Okay. 186,000 or whatever, 168,000 is not sustaining. Sustaining is the full amount. So I think that if we're going to vote on something and use the word sustaining, we need to define sustaining, we need to have a dollar amount, and it needs to be measurable. We can't sort of just do this nebulous, once again, vote on something that we can't clearly say, "This is what we meant," and then six months from now, as Alderman Rainey said, we're like, "Oh, well, we meant that we'd come up with the 86,000, and now we're going to keep them open again." So all I'm asking for is, as Alderman Rainey said and Alderman Holmes have said, what are the clear parameters? Where's the pro forma? And I agree, if a, if a housing entity was coming in here, we would be all over them to ask them, "Where is their, their return on this investment? Where is, where is, how much money are they getting? Where are they getting the money from?" And we have asked for nothing, but we're giving up 168,000 dollars. I think it's irresponsible not to have more information, and what are we going to do in six months and one day?
Alderman Wilson?
I'm not having the same struggle with, with understanding the proposal. It, to me, it's funding for the six months, sometime prior to the six months and one day. We'll need to get a plan that either we deem to be sustainable or not sustainable. It's going to come back to us, and we'll have to make that judgment at that time. And I'm not suffering from that lack of clarity. I, I think that, I question whether it can happen. I don't think that we should provide the 168,000 dollars in funding, but I understand the motion, and I'm in a position to vote on the motion.
All right, seeing no further light, City Clerk, would you call Alderman Rainey?
Add one thing, Alderman Winn, could you add one thing to the motion? And that is that notice be given to the South Branch Library for the five-month termination?
We're, we're voting on calling the question now. Could you raise that?
But I'm asking if, when we do that, will she add that?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The, the motion on the floor right now is to call the question, which requires a two-thirds roll call vote.
Got that. Thank you.
Okay, but, but the point is, once we vote to call the question, there's no more discussion on the motion, because the question will be on the floor. So I want to know from Alderman Winn, can she amend her motion to add, to include the, the notification to the landlord that we want to terminate our lease?
Alderman Rainey, I haven't read the lease recently, and I would...
But you just told us that.
I, I would like to leave it in the hands of the legal department and the city manager to make the best decision. If that's, I don't know whether we should give the notice tomorrow or what the right, the correct timeframe is.
March 1st.
City Clerk, would you...
I don't have the lease in front of me.
City Clerk, would you call, call the roll?
This is the first step to, to, to keeping the libraries open.
No, that's not, Alderman Rainey, I, this is, this is someone who, who, who does, I, you're asking me to make a legal decision here, Anne, without the legal document in front of me.
City Clerk?
Alderman Rainey? No. Oh, to call the question, yes.
To call the question.
Yes, to call the question, yes. Alderman Burris?
Yes.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste? Alderman Winn? Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Holmes?
Yes.
Alderman Tandem?
Yes.
Alderman Grover?
Believe that?
Pardon?
Alderman Grover?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
The motion passes. Next is the motion to pay 167,000 dollars. Sorry, 168,000 dollars to keep the branches open for six months. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Rainey? No. Alderman Burris?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste? Alderman Winn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Holmes?
No.
Alderman Handom?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye, thank you.
Motion passes, five to four. That ends discussion on the libraries. Is there anything more?
Do we vote on the furlough days?
What? No, we did not.
Do we vote on the furlough days?
Okay.
Do we? I think, yes.
Yes, we did.
All right.
We have five now.
Alderman Rainey?
I was wondering if the city manager could just give us a brief comment on the presentation of the capital improvement plan? And are there going to be any surprises? I haven't looked at my packet this week yet.
Yes, there's huge surprises. I'm proposing that we spend significantly less money on capital than we have in the past, because I'm not recommending that we take on more debt than is appropriate. So that's the big surprise. Staff had originally recommended 16 million dollars in capital projects, and Mr. Lyons, the final number for GEO capital projects is?
In our first priority listing, it's about 7.6 million dollars, and all the priorities for 10, 11 would be down to approximately 11 million dollars.
So you will, the document that we distributed last night has a first-tier content somewhat similar to how we've done the operating budget, but we're also sharing with you that our level of debt generally, I think it's safe to say, far exceeds any of our neighbors for general obligation debt for capital projects. And would ask the council, as you deliberate Monday evening, that we pare that down.
City Manager?
I have one surprise that I, I would like to mention. Having spent three hours at Evanston High School with students discussing their need for, their very real need for a place to hang out, they would like some of the skateboarding equipment to be reinstalled, and not at Crown, I believe, currently. And I'm sorry, Mr. Gaynor's not in the room. I think it's by Sam's Club, and we now are down to two pieces of equipment that is not in good shape, and they have asked, and we, and we wouldn't have to staff it, but it would be a one-time expense, and I have no idea how much it would be, but I thought I better mention it. Mr. Gaynor? To whom I've said nothing about this. Wouldn't you like to comment after, after I pull this one at the last minute?
Certainly. What was the question?
Students at the high school would very much like us to repair the capital improvement thing. I hope it's not much money to repair the skateboarding. We, we're down to two devices, and I guess we used to have more, and it's over near Sam's Club or something.
I'm not aware of the Sam's Club. We used to have a, a facility which was on the east side of the Crown Center, in that parking lot which was cordoned off. We had a number of portable pieces of equipment which were made out of wood. They deteriorated in very bad shape. And then we closed the facility for a couple of reasons. One, we didn't have capital dollars to make the repairs. Two, liability issues. And three, the supervision that was required because of the activity. And we certainly could report back to council with respect to what it would cost to open it up again.
Did we supervise it?
Well, at one time, we, we didn't, but because of the number of conflicts between skateboarders and then those, some of the folks were out there with their smaller bikes, and they were using the, the jumps and the equipment.
Okay, well, you're going to have to report back on it another time.
Be happy to.
All I'm doing is warning you that there might be a small, I hope, proposal. Alderman Burris?
I think the skateboarding place that you may be referring to is actually by the Pooch Park.
Yeah.
And it's, okay, so it's, I don't think it's ours.
It's Skokie's.
Right.
The Skokie Park District has it.
Well, the kids think it's ours, so I think Skokie should improve it, and...
There you are. Go for it.
Alderman Wilson?
I would like to move to approve the general fund budget as amended by our preceding series of motions.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the budget as amended. Alderman?
Approve the resolution as presented, because it's more than the general fund.
Alderman Rainey?
Could we, could we get the totals, please? I, you know, up there, I just can't see it, I'm sorry.
Do they have a new general fund number?
What's the amount going into reserves?
Yes, the, the amount going into reserves is...
Get the category, the totals per category?
It's, it's, it's coming back.
Okay.
And the number going into reserve currently is 294, 934.
That I have.
That's a bad thing.
There you are.
So it's 86, 578, 966 for the general fund. Would you like, Alderman Rainey, to go through each fund?
I, I would, yeah.
If that's the only thing that has changed from...
Each, each category that you have in the...
What we hit, the resolution? Members of council...
Like subtotal revenue adjustments, like that, those categories?
I can also bring that up as well, I made those changes. This is what the resolution attachment would look like, and I will go back to the general fund right now.
How many people can see that? I mean, am I the only one?
For once, I can see something.
You can, but you're closer. Nope. I can see that.
I can see the blue screen.
Can you have it?
It's pretty good, Mark. Can't you just enhance it at the top, the percentage, the one, 100%? Can we enhance it?
Can you just say, just say it?
Is the only number changing, the general number?
The general fund right now, and the bottom line, obviously.
Alderman Rainey, members of the council, you should have at your seats, copy, well, we'll pass out copies of Resolution 13R-10, which is approving the fiscal year budget. There is an attachment, which I believe we are only changing two numbers to. Is that correct, Mr. Lyons?
We're only changing one number.
And the total. And the total. So if you look at page three of the, of the resolution, this has all of the numbers, and we need to change two numbers. We will change the first number, the general fund number. Mr. Lyons, that number should now be?
Just give me one moment, I just pulled that off of the screen. The new number for the general fund, the new number for the general fund expenditures would be 86,578,966. That is an increase of 70,000, and the increase of 70,000 comes from a, the addition of the two forestry maintenance personnel at 100,000 dollars, the addition back in of the manager 5% at 150,000, for a 250,000 dollar increase, then mitigated by the additional unpaid holiday of 180,000 dollars for a net increase of 70,000 dollars from the resolution. I believe that was in the packet, and if it was not, but that is the, that is the...
They've just now handed it out.
All right, so that is the, the difference.
And the total number, then? Changes from 228, 096, 054, 2?
Two, the total all funds is 228, 166, 654.
Otherwise, the numbers that are on the sheet that we have just distributed are correct.
We spent all?
Yes.
Mr. City Manager, since we have motioned to approve this budget, yet we have not had a presentation on the capital improvement plan, which is part of this resolution, is it not?
I mean, I...
If I may...
Yes, please.
You are correct, Alderman Rainey. And so the, the budget that would be adopted here would be the, the budget that does include in the capital improvements plan, the 15 million dollar bond issue that we would come to you on Monday night and reduce.
I think, I, I really think that we should recommend this, that recommend to ourselves that we pass this on Monday night, but I think, I don't think it's responsible to pass this that includes the capital improvement plan today.
I, I agree.
But it'll be at the top of our list on Monday night.
And, and, Ms...
Swear to God, I won't mention the library.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
I might.
If they do, I will.
Could I have a motion adjourned? Alderman Jean Baptiste?
So, are we going to table if there's a motion on the board to be withdrawn?
Yeah, we're going to, it's withdrawn.
Yeah, it's drawn. It's withdrawn.
It's been withdrawn.
Withdrawn motion.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Yes, I just want to thank members of the council for continuing this process till I got back into the United States. I want to give you a report on Monday, when we have more time, more energy, but I would say that, you know, week four is qualitatively different than week one. That while people have lost a lot, they continue to move. The destruction is massive, but not pervasive. There are places where you didn't see the kind of destruction that the, the earthquake had wreaked. A lot of people remain under temporary shelter. The best of tents, the worst of tents made up of branches and cloth, and some are still sleeping in open air. The UN folks said it is the worst humanitarian disaster that they've ever seen. And, you know, it's hard to determine whether or not, with the rainy season coming in March, whether all of the forces gathered together can meet the challenge. So that means that if that challenge cannot be met, people will be angry, there will be a lot of pressure on the powers that be to do what the, there'll be a lot of demands on them. So the essence is, people are in motion, a lot has been done, a lot remains to be done. So we'll talk further on Monday. Thank you very much.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you.
Take the vote to adjourn, we're adjourned. Done.